It is Thursday, February 10th, 2022. At 6:05 PM. We're doing this meeting via Zoom also to expand our meeting out there to everybody. We put it up on the screen so you guys can see also, if you can, who's up there. Anybody talks or anything like that, you can see who's in Zoom. We are recording the Zoom meeting and our meeting tonight is being recorded via WCAT 12 also. The chat for Zoom is shut off, correct?
Yeah.
Because we're not supposed to have the chat on Zoom meetings. It's one of the... Who tells us not to use that?
It allows two people chat during the meeting.
Yeah, it allows a sidebar communication within the meeting and we're not allowed to have that going on. So that's why the chat is disabled. If you have any questions, hit the little hand button and we'll call upon you. And we'll give everybody an opportunity at the end of the meeting to bring up anything, okay? Okay, first thing in the meeting is the Pledge of Allegiance. If I could have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if everybody sees our nice new flag, we get a new flag in here. Because our other one got stained somehow. So that will be properly destroyed when we have the flag burning ceremony with the Veterans Council on the 28th. Saturday, the 28th at 4:30 PM.
I think it's the 26th.
Is it the 26th? It's Saturday.
Saturday, 26th.
26th, Saturday, the 26th. All right. Okay, first thing on the agenda is Board of Health appointment. And this is a roll call. Two people have applied for this position, okay? And that is Daniel Thibodeau and Jean Howard, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we do, we have both people here?
Nope.
One of them.
Either one of them showed up.
Okay. Do you guys as Board of Health have a recommendation for who should?
Daniel.
Yes.
Daniel Thibodeau.
You guys voted for Daniel?
Yes.
Okay, and why is that?
His background is very impressive.
So is he on, he's on the Leventhal Board of Health, is that, or he works there?
I haven't, I saw. Would you know that?
No.
I mean, that's what it says on here.
Yeah.
He's the interim director of emergency management in Leventhal as well as holds other positions. But he's technically running the emergency management position over there at this time.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, he seems qualified.
Yeah.
I'm good with that for the recommendations of Board of Health, you know?
Yeah, if they're interested.
Are you good with that? Do you have any questions, Ken?
As long as the Board of Health is happy with it, I have no objection.
Yes.
Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, do a motion.
All right, I make a motion to appoint Daniel Thibodeau to the Board of Health to fill out Ken Lacy's term.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich, aye.
Derek, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. Now Board of Health, hold on. If you could do it in front of the camera so people could see you.
Aye. From Board of Health, Charlene.
Don, aye.
It is full name.
Don McCauley, aye.
Charlene Ferris, aye.
Okay. So. Okay, the vote is unanimous and the motion passes. And Daniel Thibodeau is appointed to the Board of Health for Ken Lacy's term. Okay, congratulations, Daniel. Look at that, nice, easy one. And do we have, are you going to do up the thing and we'll sign those? Okay. All right. And part of that, the Board of Health had a recommendation that they'd like to bring forward. Are you guys good with that?
Yes.
Are you good with the recommendation by the Board of Health on, this is about the building and opening?
What is the recommendation?
Well, that's what they're going to make.
Okay, sure.
We're recommending that the building can be opened on Monday, February 14th, with a mask mandate in place until February 28th. But the building can be opened on the 14th.
And contact tracing?
They're not even doing contact tracing anymore.
Okay, so.
So just to be clear, the last day we would wear masks is the 28th.
Yes.
So on March 1st, we're done.
Yes.
And that doesn't mean people can't wear masks.
They can wear masks.
We're just not mandating them to wear the masks.
Correct.
So to be clear with that, it is a... The masks will not be mandated after the 28th of March, but if they choose...
February.
Yeah.
Yes, February, February, okay. Not March, February, sorry. I don't want to extend it longer than it has to be.
Please.
So, and if you choose to wear a mask, you can. Just it's not mandatory to enter the building. But we will open up the building on the 14th, Monday, and with the mask mandate, okay? So do you guys want to talk about that? Are you good with that?
I'm good with the Board of Health opening the building, having the masks as an option. Because I see through the history, every time the state loses, you know, mandates, then here we go again up, and it's like a roller coaster. All right, I've been wearing a mask since the start of the beginning and I'm still going to keep it, still wearing it. They do work, all my family is wearing it. I've been sitting next to people who came with COVID. And so far, me and my family, we've been okay. So I believe in the use of a proper mask to stay safe. And remember, this is, this is not Massachusetts, this is not United States, it's the whole world. So we, we have, we are all in this together, right? So, and as a free country, we all have our will to use or not to use a mask. I do it because I protect, I don't want to hurt anybody, but I don't want them to hurt me at any time. And I don't want to hurt my family too. But, you know, I would just suggest that have the employees have the option to them to have their sign when they go into their office, if they want to, to have a sign there, please wear a mask. If they don't feel comfortable. At least if I would work on this building, I will have my sign over there, it doesn't matter why, because I want to protect me and I want to protect everybody else, just as an option. You know? If they feel okay, that's fine. But, you know, if they feel like they need to protect themselves a little bit here in their office, I, you know, it's like, this is my space, you know?
Do you have anything?
No, I'm good with it.
So my stance on it is, we definitely should be opening up the buildings to access to the public because it makes it easier for the public to be able to do business with their local government. And that's what we should be, is open to the local, you know, to the residents for their convenience, okay? The masks, you know, I think it's a personal decision for people. I think with the offices, I understand your recommendation. But I also think the offices are well protected. They already have plastic up, the shields, so they're not in close contact with people because they are protected, they all have the shields, you have a desk that people have to stand by. So they're distanced. And the employees, if they wanted to, they can absolutely feel, if they want to put their masks on, that will protect them. But I think if we do a mask, that's essentially saying, we're not going to do a mask mandate, but you guys are all set to do your own mask mandates, and it's confusing to the public. I think they're very well protected. If they didn't have those shields and they felt awkward, then I'd probably side with you on that. But they are protected, they're distanced. And, you know, it's really up to the individual people. The mask is here to protect me, you know, so I don't get sick. People wear masks so they don't get sick. You know, I think it's personal preference and I think we're all adults. We have the ability to make our own decisions for our health at these days. And I think government's getting way too far into everybody's business. And we need to give that choice to the people. That's my say on it.
Mr. Chairman, I agree on what you're saying. I'm just going to make a point. If we put a big fence over here and somebody in the back starts smoking, I bet Mrs. Karen is going to go nuts. So the air coming out of his lungs, we all feel it. So just the point that, you know, just because we are protected, but if something in the middle, it doesn't really...
But you're going to smell it whether you're wearing a mask or not.
Yeah, but the mask stops it, if it's a proper mask.
No, you're still going to smell that smoke.
It smokes, but not the virus.
Well, if the smoke can get through, the virus can get through.
No.
Oh, yeah. So. But that, you know, that's why we have a board, whether it's differing opinions or not.
And like I said, I agree with you, I just, you know, the explanation of because they have a thing, it is difficult. So if we open the building and there's no mask mandates, I'm happy that the employees can decide if they want to use a mask.
Yeah, no, anybody can wear a mask if they choose to do that. And I think, anyway, on the choice.
We didn't base this on our decision.
Nope, let me, hold on.
It's being decided by Governor Baker. It's time to start dropping them, even with the schools. We have a meeting on the 16th and Superintendent Castigian will be there to discuss this with us then.
And I'm happy about it. I really see this roller coaster. I hope I'm wrong this time and that doesn't happen, but that's life.
All right, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. So do we want to do a motion?
All right, so I'll make a motion to open the building, starting the 14th, and then ending the mask mandate on the 28th.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Rich, aye.
Derek Billys, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. The building will open up as of Monday, February 14th. And the mask mandate will end as of February 28th. With the ability for residents or employees, if they want to wear a mask, they can wear it. There's just no requirement to do so after the 28th, okay? Great, are you good? Thank you very much for bringing that forward to us and I'm sure you'll make a lot of residents happy. It's a sensitive topic right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And do we got a status on the test kits?
We're still waiting on delivery.
So we're still waiting on delivery for the test kits?
They are supposed to be, the order is supposed to be delivered in full. It's not supposed to come box by box, the whole order will come in at once.
Okay. So all comes in at one time and we're still waiting for it to come in.
We'll notify you as soon as they arrive.
And we'll put that out to the public, everybody wants they know, and we'll have something set up.
We've actually been in touch with Chief Mallett and Chief Lavoie about using a rec alert.
Okay.
A what? A rec alert?
Reverse nine one one.
Reverse nine one one.
Oh, oh, okay.
And we figured it might get out to more people that way.
Okay.
Very good.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good one.
All right, Moore Water District, update on water treatment plant and plans to replace pipes. So. Hello tonight. It's good to have you guys here and I'm going to turn around. And do you want to give us an update, identify who you are and your position? Okay, so everybody knows who's talking, okay?
Somehow or other, I've been giving that.
If you guys can sit up front a little bit here.
I hate the camera. Put on 10 pounds in front of the camera. I guess I've been asked to speak to some things that we put together to share with you. The hydrants, we increase...
What's that?
Increase the... Cynthia Baxter.
Yes.
Just a member.
Member, okay.
Just a member. We gave documentation about the increase to the assessment fee. We, so we're going to be increasing the assessment fee on the hydrants to, a little bit, the letter is over there. One additional hydrant was installed on Moore Avenue, bringing the total of hydrants to 125 in the town. In FY21, the hydrants to be replaced, school, in FY21, we replaced a hydrant on School Street and one on Liberty Street. And we plan on hydrant replacement by the end of FY22 to be the intersection of Maple and Mechanic Street and at 40 Mechanic Street as well. Water main replacement for FY22, installing pipes on Hillside Ave to connect to Quaybuck Street by the end of the fiscal year. This has taken us a bit longer than we've wanted, but we've run into an issue of trying to get parts, we're waiting for some parts. We should have received a memo about the American Rescue Plan Act for High Street water line replacement for fiscal 23. We've given Karen a letter. Customers will be asked if they would like to replace their service lines at that time of construction. Costs a lot less if you do it at that time than if something breaks and we have to start all over again. The pipe is on back order for six months at this time. And pipe prices are increasing daily. So the water board suggests that you think about ordering this as soon as possible to lock in the current prices. The overall cost at this point, Dave Johnson has done a good job of putting together a cost estimate for water line replacement is a total of $265,925. The, everything seems to be back ordered, so you should want to think about ordering the materials now so that the prices are locked in. A police detail is going to be required at the current rate estimate of 124 hours. By, I guess they get paid $45 an hour. And a temporary water main with service pressure test, chlorination and bacteria test is also included in the estimate that we've given you. And the Community Development Block Grant for School Street water line replacement for FY23. Customers will be asked if they'd like to replace their service lines once again at the time of construction and future work on this Community Development Block Grant for Prospect Street water line replacement. And our water treatment plant is coming along quite nicely. We broke ground on October 2nd, 2021. RH White has been awarded the bid. We have monthly contract meetings, where Rich is there at these monthly contract meetings that we have. Construction meetings rather, and they're really quite interesting, we've been moving right along. Backwash tanks are all installed, the footings and foundations are installed. We were going to get you some pictures, but we didn't manage to get them done, but maybe next time. And we are on schedule at this time, joyfully to say, we will be estimated to be online by December 2022 for the plant opening, the spring of 2023 for landscaping and completion. So there you go.
Very good. Do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. First one, what was the hydrant fee before?
I actually did not bring that information with me, to be honest with you. I grabbed what I needed, but it was... Don, do you remember what it was?
No, I don't.
Was it 275 and went to three and a quarter, those numbers?
I'm going to close.
Yeah. I can get back to you on that.
Okay. The second question I have is more for Karen. Is that, our, the price list, they have an estimate, is that okay for ARPA, is that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so you're good with ARPA, that's what they need. So with the water treatment plant, obviously there's been tons of people, especially out here with bad water for many years. Do you have any kind of idea? I mean, once the plant goes online, do you have any kind of idea when the water would start to clear?
When we do, I'm Loretta Vodriam, the clerk. When we do our April flushing, this April, it has started really vigorously flushing. At each flushing, we are going to be doing more and more vigorous flushing to try and clear everything out. And we're hoping that it shows immediate, once the line, once the treatment plant comes online, we're hoping that its effects are immediate.
Okay, so this is in preparation, so you're sort of saying in April of this year?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good.
So may I add to that?
Of course.
At this point in time, we're getting iron and manganese out of the aquifer coming directly to your fossils. The treatment plant is going to prevent that by taking it out at the treatment plant at Coves Pond before it gets into the distribution system and out to everybody. But what's out there is it still is in the pipes. So that's where the conflict of questioning comes in, to where it's in the pipes. Well, of course it's in the pipes because they got there from coming out of the aquifer. So it will be multiple flushings probably until we get it out of those pipes. But with each flushing, it will clear up every time, more and more.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I don't, not right now.
No. Derek, did you have any?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. So. Gonna turn it towards me so I can talk now.
Here, I can turn it towards you.
Okay, you gotta turn it towards him?
Yeah.
All right. There you go. All right. So, one of the things we do is selectment, is we monitor social media. And we've been seeing a lot, and I've been seeing a lot, on, say, Facebook, Neighborhood Watch and other sites. People put in displays of what their water is coming out of the faucets. And in some people's houses, it looks like it's coffee. It's, it's a dark, dark brown, almost black water coming out of their faucets. And it, it's pretty consistent. It's staining people's, you know, toilets, showers, sinks. And it's clothing, 'cause they don't wanna wash with it. You know, and, and they're having some serious issues with that. They pay a water bill each month, but yet they can't use their water. And they have to use bottled water and things like that. Can you guys tell us why this is happening?
I, I think, I think when you're seeing really black water coming out of people's faucets, I think those may be things that they're taking when there's been a water main break, where there's been a flushing cycle going on. I think that might be what you're seeing that's really, really black all the time. Don't you think so?
That's when it happens at my house.
That's when it happens at my house. As a general rule of thumb, there's a tiny bit of discoloration in my water up on Richardson Street. But when it comes out and it really is staining my toilet and really being nasty coming out of the faucet, it's because of one of those things. They could be running the sprinkler, they do a sprinkler, um.
At the school?
At the school, which has an effect on the water quality.
And the water plant?
And the, and the.
And pump?
And the pump.
Warren pumps.
Warren pumps.
Well, it used to be Warren pumps.
When they flush their, um, sprinkler system, when we have water main breaks, when we're doing, when we're doing flushing, those kind of things will cause the water to look that way. It may not be affecting, there may be a section in town that they're not flushing right in front of their house, but it'll still affect in that general area. So that could be what's, what some of it is that they're seeing. But I don't think that it runs like that on a general basis with anybody, with, with the exception of one person who's come to us. We've only really had one person that's come to us that has issues with her, with her water, and we've kind of taken care of that through the, uh, through the proper channels. So we haven't had anyone come to us.
Okay.
And I think that speaks volumes. It's very easy to anonymously put something on Facebook or anyplace else, but if you have a problem, they should come to us, and we can take a look at it and see what, what's going on, perhaps explain to them. But if they're just gonna arbitrarily put this out there and not come to the source, then, you know, they're gonna speak amongst themselves. That's not gonna solve their problem. So as a board, we have not had one person, we've had one person over the two years that I've been on the board that's come down and sat with us and said, listen, I have this issue. So I don't know where all the rest of these people are. Um, and as I said, I'm not saying that what they're seeing is not happening, but there's probably an explanation for what is happening.
Now, when you do do these flushings, and there is contaminants getting into the waters, whatever it is, whatever the source is, from flushing or whatever, is there a message that's put, been put out to all the residents? That that's going on, or it's gonna happen?
There is a notice sent out with the billing stating when we will be flushing. It is also on the sign on the side of our building. Um, and we do do the reverse nine-one-ones, but I know with changing of, like, the town changed their system.
So we're in the process.
So we're in the process. I think, are we setting up our own?
We're looking into what's available out there for a small, small water industry that we've got, but, um, there isn't very much. It's all a, a very expensive monthly fee.
Well, I, I can give you some real quick options.
Good.
Okay, well, first of all, if you guys have a Facebook site for the water department, you could send out a message real quick to, to people that join your Facebook site. Um, you could do one-way messages so they can't respond. They can't, you know, comment or anything like that. You just send it out as a safety notice. Um, you could also let us know, and we'll put it on our site, on the town website, so people will look at it. And we could send out a message through all the residents that have signed up for the town website. There's a little link on the town's website, and it says, sign up for notifications. And we could actually send out notifications through the website on that also. And Derek, you're doing something with red dot, which is gonna be free, and you're gonna be able to send out notices too.
Mr. Chairman, I, I recommend that we include the water department on our town alert.
And we would very much appreciate that.
It's, it's a, it's a free app for the residents in town. And what it is, is you have an app on your phone, and when you wanna send a message, you send it, and everybody will get it. The beauty of this is nobody has to sign up. There's no emails, there's no phone, and there's no data collection. So it's a, it's a, it's gonna be a good way, uh, to put any alerts, um, for residents.
Terrific, thank you.
So I think there's multiple ways we can get the message out there without increasing a cost for anybody. Um, we have methods of doing that, and I'm sure, you know, the chiefs would do a reverse nine-one-one for everybody too, um, just to get that message out there. Because when people turn on their faucet and it starts spewing out coffee, they're concerned. They don't know what it is. And if you're doing laundry and you don't know it's gonna happen, 'cause to be honest, how many of us really read the flyers inside of those?
No.
The mails?
I, I have to say, that's our responsibility. I mean, if, if that's our responsibility to look at those things. I read everything that I get in the mail.
It is.
And, you know, you can't fault the water department, or they shouldn't hold the water department responsible for their neglect and not reading what comes in their, what comes in their, their, with their bill. I mean, I'm hoping they open their bill not the day that it's due, but when it arrives in their home. And there is a really nice notice and a lot of information about the tests that we've run and things that could make them feel more, more involved and engaged with this utility. So I mean, I'm, I agree with you that we can do more, but I think at this point, we've done well.
Everybody does stuff via computers. Very, very few people do anything with real mail anymore. You know, I, some of the older residents will still do that because they're not so good with the computers. But we're having a younger population move up now. Buying homes, owning property within our town. And to be honest, if it's not coming through as a message or an email or a text message, they're not looking at it. You know, they pay their bill and they, whatever, you know? We need to open up to everybody and get it out there as many ways as we can. We, as a select board, had to adapt to that also. That's why we're doing it via Zoom, along with having in-person meetings, along with sending out via Facebook versus our, you know, via our site. When we have bigger events or other things that the town should be notified, we send it out messages through the website, and we post it on our website. We can have a section on the website for the water department so you guys can do updates on the website too. We can give you guys that. So.
We do have a page on the, on the town website. It does just have a link back to your own page, but you do have a spot if you wanna put messages up there.
So you, you could put your stuff in there. And you could even send out your own message. You don't have to tell us and say, hey, I wanna send, I want you to send out a message. You can go on the town website, and that goes to, I think we're a thousand residents that it goes out to now? So.
So Mr. Chairman, may, may I show you one sample?
Yes, sure.
Jim, you wanna send an alert from your phone? So all police officers, um, fire department and SERC team already have this center. This is what they, you will have. So he's gonna send the test. You will see. And we all get it because we all have it too.
Is this the red dot that you were speaking of?
No, red dot, this is town alert.
Okay.
This is a mass notification system. So from him, the town officials, and now it's gonna be including you, gonna be able to send that message.
Is it only cell phones?
Yes, you can do it from a computer. You can have an, you can go into your computer and send a message, but it's mainly because everybody, it's on phones and you can do it on a phone. It's very easy to use.
She doesn't have a cellphone.
See him?
So that's an app? That's an app you download onto your computer, onto your laptop?
Yes.
Phone?
Yes.
What's the name of it again?
If you go to town-alert.com, you will get there the app that receives messages. That's the one we're gonna promote to everybody.
Okay, thank you very much.
It changed into a dog. New picture.
A new picture? There you go.
There you go. So, yeah, if we can get the message out more, I think that would allow residents to understand what is going on with, with their water and avoid confusion and avoid the, "Look at my water today!" You know, "What's going on?" And if they know, hey, they're flushing water mains today.
They're flushing, we do know that.
They're doing the flushing. They, this is what's gonna happen. Expect this for the next eight hours or whatever.
If I may add one thing, though, unfortunately, in the case of a water main break, we don't know that it's happened until we get a call that someone's water's brown.
But that's where you can send out a message.
We can, but by then it's already in the system.
Right, and, and.
That's okay.
As long as everybody knows why it's happening.
Yes.
You know, and it's not just, well, we're not doing our maintenance. No. There, this, this is an issue. And that's why Highway Department has the, the town alert. If there's a tree down in the road, they can say, avoid this road. Same thing with SERC team. SERC team's closing off this section of the, whatever, because avoid this area. Same with fire, police. It's getting the message out to the residents. So they know, because when people jump on Facebook, they start making up things.
Yes.
And they start saying, oh, this, it turns into.
So he's sending a message, and it's right here. So from his phone, he can do that. The messages can have pictures, like you seen this one with the car that he did earlier today?
Yes.
And also, if you know where the problem is, I can show you all this. You could, you could set the location on a map so people know where this is, problem is. So for example, Highway, there's, there's a washout, and the, they can't, they can go automatically and say, this road is closed, and they'll put it on the map, and everybody can see it and see, oh, I can't go through, you know, Washington Street because it's blocked, and see that, exactly that same. So I think if, if you're okay, we can share you the power to send messages to the public.
We would love to have that ability.
It's free. And you will learn it very quickly, and then it's very convenient because that, what that does is it sends a notification to your phone. Also follow on Facebook and everything, but sometimes you, you go to Facebook and you never hear until when you see the, the notification. Oh, this was two hours ago, maybe from yesterday. But this is immediately, you just send it right to where everybody else. So I think you should take advantage of it.
Oh, absolutely.
We will.
Oh, we will.
So I'll, I'll follow up with you guys and show how to do it. I'll get your account set up, because, um, because you are the town officials. You need an account. You don't have to remember anything. It's very easy to do.
Great, thank you.
I'd also like to add, um, Dom Mikowski, the agent for the water board, that, um, our water, the town's water, comes from an aquifer. And so the pumps are going directly to that aquifer, taking it out and putting it into a distribution system. So think of it as you've got yourself this nice coffee. You put in two sugars, and you're sitting down there at the bottom in your straw. It's taking out all the nice coffee, and then you finally hit a portion of that sugar. So it's very possible that whenever that water starts to flow, you're gonna get a chunk of magnesium or iron that's going to be there and just distribute itself to somebody out there in the network. That's what the treatment plant is to cure. It's gonna stop it, and we're gonna use a green sand filtering system, which will take out as much as it can, if not all of it, and send it down to the sewer department. And, um, instead of going through our faucets and into our tubs and then down to the sewer department. I just thought that, so that's why you might get a little patch of it here. When you think of it, it has this big underground water system where you might have, might, by, you know, come past a portion of some magnesium and then send that out to the distribution system.
Thank you. My next question is, do you guys have a plan in place for these problem areas? I'm still hearing that there's, what, clay pipes still in the system somewhere? If water pipes? Is that true?
I'm not aware of any clay. I know all the wooden ones are gone.
The wooden ones? I'm hoping they're all gone.
But I haven't heard of any clay ones out there at this point in time.
I don't know that we used clay. I know that there were asbestos pipes at length time, but as far as I know, they have all been replaced, but don't, I'm not a hundred percent on that. But I'm fairly sure that there was a project done some years ago that replaced any asbestos pipes that we had.
Okay. Do, can we get that confirmed?
We will certainly look into it and get a confirmation for you on, uh, what we've got out there.
Because we, we would like to, you know, we're here to work with you and help you and, you know, give our residents the best quality of water they can possibly get. Yes, I understand the water treatment plant is a major part of that, but we also, if there's lines out there that need to be replaced, it'd be good to have plans on where your problem areas are. Not just, well, we wanna fix this road, and we wanna fix this. But if you have a plan where your problem areas are.
We do, we do.
And is there any way you could share that with us?
That's what we've been working with the CD, what is it, Community Block Grants?
Yep, with Chris Dumphy.
Down, yes.
Okay. When you, when you identify your problem areas, can you share that with us so we know? Because may, maybe we can do something to get a notice out there, like put it on your site, on the town website, that these are known problem areas and what you're doing to fix those areas.
Every, every year we replace a section of pipe.
This year, what is it, Prospect Street is next, right? Or is it School Street? School Street is the next one. High Street, because that's a big, this is a big problem area. Moore Avenue was recently done, as was Quay Bog Street. Our biggest problem areas have been High Street, Quay Bog Street, School Street, Moore Avenue, and Prospect Street.
And we're doing Hillside Terrace, Hillside Ave.
That's a, that's a looping.
It's still gonna be.
So it's not a dead end anymore.
Right.
Okay. So it'd be great if we could share that with the public, what's going on? Because I think the residents wanna know what is happening to fix these issues. And that we're not just sit there and ignoring them and, you know, not giving them any information. It's best if we get the information out there. Residents will probably come back with some questions, but as long as you keep it open and say, we're fixing this, we're working on this. We only have a limited amount of money. We understand this. You know, we're trying to keep your bills down, but we're also trying to address the main issues with these, these areas. We understand this. You know, we're trying to keep your bills down, but we're also trying to address the main issues with these areas." And as long as we can get that out to the public, I think they'll be a little more understanding that what's going on and that if they feel like they're in a problem area and they see, you know, something, "I'm identified. I know we're in a problem area." They know, they're paying attention to us. And they got a plan. It may not happen tomorrow, but at least they're on the radar, and you guys are aware of it, and you're working on it. That's a lot easier for a resident to deal with than, "I'm not hearing anything. I don't know what's going on." You know, because again, I know you put out the flyer in the bill, but people right now don't wanna be reading their bills, their mind flyers, because everything's going up. So that's where we open it up to every other means, social media, alert systems, you know, on TV, so the residents can see you guys and see what's going on, and they see who their officials are, and they know that you're engaged and you're working on these things. And that's what we're here for too. We're here to help with that. And to be honest, other than the water treatment plant, I don't know what you guys do. And that's sad, because we got so much going on in town. I know what's going on with everybody. But as far as with the water departments, we don't really talk. We don't have conversations back and forth like this. We don't have discussions. And we really should. We should have these more regular, so you guys can be on TV. They can see who you are, and we can ask the questions and work these things out. And I think this is great so far.
Our goal is to get drinkable water to every one of our customers' taps. We sample it. It's sampled by the state, and it comes back with information on the contaminants that are in there and where the, what levels they are, and if they meet the maximum contaminant levels. That comes in that flyer, the consumer report that you get in there. And believe it or not, the water is drinkable, but aesthetically, it looks a little ugly, and you might even hear somebody out there go, "My cows don't even wanna drink it."
I haven't heard that one yet.
But it goes back from the state, that, hey, this, boom, you got no problem. Nobody call line. Sure, these maximum contaminant levels are at their maximum, and that's why that treatment plant had to go online.
And that would be great if you guys started putting that, like, on the town website too, under the water department, because if you put that on there, then anytime a resident says, "I don't know what's in my water," well, go to the town website. There's, each time we've done it, there's one of those reports on there, and you could review them. Because even if they throw them away, now it's on there.
There are no settling tanks. There are no settling tanks. There were no screens, no filtration, no nothing. What comes out of that aquifer is what you get directly. To maintain those pipes and the pumps and the electric, to do that water sampling, and there's also chemicals added to stop deterioration of the pipes. It is more complicated than, I guess, customers know, obviously. So that's why it's good to have these meetings.
And we're very happy that this board is willing to work with our board. It has not been that way in the past.
We're here to work for the residents, just like you are, you know? And when the residents have concerns, they bring them to us, and we watch, you know, via the social media sites, via email. We get emails of this stuff. I've had actually some stuff come down from the state, and I, you know, with some concerns because residents brought stuff up to them. And, you know, again, if we have answers and we have a plan to address these things, that's a good thing. We can identify that to the residents and not just sit there and say, "Well, you'll get your bill in there." You know, we're putting it out to everybody so they know. And even if it's not just, say, the, you know, say, your, the residents that are dealing with your specific water district, okay, because we have two in town. Even it's not just that, you know, residents that are listening to that, they think it's all the water throughout the town. And they don't just realize it's affecting just one little area. And by doing something like an alert or putting a map on the town website of that problem area, people see these things, and they know. And the rumor mill kinda stops at that point, and you don't get the bad rap, you know? We get that all the time because misinformation, and we gotta go in and say, "Okay, what you heard was misinformation. This is the truth, and this is where we're getting the truth." We show them, so they see it, and that usually stops anything like that. It's gonna happen no matter what, but the more information we get out there, the better, okay? And we're willing to help you get that information out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let us know what we need to do. We'll get you on the town alert system. We'll make sure that you get hooked up on the website, and you know how to use that, and we can teach you how to use that and do updates to it, and have the passwords and everything you need to get on there so you can update your own stuff that's you guys doing, because that's your section. And what else?
I don't think that's, I just think it's a great idea that you should put your projects up, even the old, you know, just talk about what you've done and what you have planned for the future. You might as well toot your own horn. I mean, you're working on this stuff, and, you know, it takes piece by piece and over the years, but put it up there and say, "Look, we're making progress, you know? We're getting through this stuff." So, yeah, and we can help you with the website and get you, so you can have that information out there. It's no problem.
And to be honest, you're in one of those departments, nobody's gonna talk about you until something's wrong.
Right.
You know, it's just the nature of the beast. You know, nobody says, "Hey, I got great tasting water this week."
I do.
Yep, besides Karen.
So do you have a, can we set up some kind of an appointment or find out what time we can do this, Derek?
Cindy, just email me, and we'll start from there. I'll get you set up in two hours.
Okay.
Great.
And we'll get you on the town website, and who wants to be in charge of that, updating the website?
We'll pick somebody.
We have to figure that out.
If you could just send me an email, who's gonna be in charge of your section of the town website. I will make sure you have access to that, and I will run you through it. We'll sit down. I'll show you how to update it, and anything else, post your meetings, send out messages. It's really not that difficult, but you need to be shown it. It's not one of those things you could just jump on and start changing the website.
It's not super intuitive, so.
It's not user-friendly, but once you know how to do it.
Yeah, you need a little training.
I would like to also put in there that we're only got one person out in the field at this point in time, and that's Dave Johnson, and besides, there's new tie-ins, keeping the fire plugs clean, or areas cleaned after a snowstorm. And the morning duties for checking things, making sure everything's here. This is that. The pump's running here. How many gallons is it? He's got a lot to do. He's got, so we're looking into adding an additional person. We haven't.
Now, how are you doing that?
How are we doing that? Well, it's gonna be through the budget process first.
Okay, because if you need somebody, you should have somebody. If you're, if you're, if you have one person that's being worked beyond his capacity.
And he's gonna retire soon, right?
And that's it.
And that's the other thing. If he's getting ready to retire, you probably should definitely be training somebody to take over before he leaves. Because we had that with the sewer department. You can't wait to the last minute. And we've helped them. We've posted, you know, the jobs on Indeed, and they've gotten several applicants, and they've hired people. And I haven't really had any complaints about the sewer department lately.
No, they're still struggling, but, you know.
But they're moving forward now. So.
So Indeed is a good way to advertise a position.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a.
We're with the Water Works, Massachusetts Water Works.
That would be good, yeah.
Yes.
And we get lots of information from them. Who's available license? You gotta, as I'm sure, maintaining that treatment plant down there, that you know about licensing, your D1, your T1s, and all that other stuff.
Yeah.
And.
But that's something, even if you had an apprentice come in, you could help train them up, because that could be an opportunity for somebody too.
We discussed that. That is one of the benefits of having someone come in, is that we will send you.
You could start them low, help them get their licenses and move them up, and that builds loyalty.
Yes.
Because you were there for them. You helped them, and you got that training program going on for them.
So what'll happen here with that treatment plant is gonna be a minimum of two, one for distribution and one for that treatment plant itself. Once that treatment plant has been looked at in the morning to make sure everything's copacetic, then you can go out and help the guy in the field exercise valves, do flushing, things like that. So we'll be increasing our manpower.
Okay.
I was gonna throw out that what the sewer department does is when they hire somebody, they have them take six months to get their license or whatever the period is. So that's kind of a requirement of the job, like, once you come on, you've gotta go for your licenses. So you can bring in people who aren't experienced or don't have license, but then, you know, you have a period where they have to get one, so.
What I've seen there is that having, I have a D1 license and I'm going for my T1, is that there's some people that just can't comprehend that.
That's true.
And no matter how long you give them, you can give them five years, and it just ain't gonna happen. Forget about it.
That's where you guys, as the employers, sit that person down and say, "You know something? Thank you for the opportunity for working for us, but you're not working out, and we're gonna have to go with somebody that can, we can afford with."
Actually, all three of us have taken the school.
Trying to keep people on that are dragging you behind is not helping you or the town. If they're not getting it, maybe they should find a different job that they can get, okay? And I'm not saying that they're not a smart person for not getting it. Maybe they just don't get that particular thing, and maybe they'd be better off doing something else.
I agree.
Again, as the employers, you guys gotta be able to make those calls and know when to cut the cord.
All three of us have taken the training for the first level distribution and treatment, and we've been working with the instructor, who is part of the Massachusetts Rural Water Works. Is that what it's called? There are so many different, and we've been working with him to find possible trainees.
Yeah, great, okay.
And again, if you put it out on Indeed, you'll get people that are more than willing to work hard for you, and it opens up that more to people. You know, sometimes, just like the sewer department, they're focused on one little thing, and they're like, "We're not getting anybody. We're not getting anybody." Over and over now. Well, you're so focused on this little tiny spot that nobody's gonna apply, okay? If you open that up, just like we're talking about, social media, advertising, getting the message out there, more people see it, and somebody that might not be licensed in this state may have a license in another state, which is the same thing, but they're not in this state network, but they're still licensed or even military. Because a lot of these military licenses convert over to state licenses or equivalent to, and they may have to take a test, but they got their license, but they have all the training. That opens it up to more people, and we don't wanna discount our veterans or anybody else because they're not in your specific network. You know, getting it out there to more people, you open it up so much more to hardworking people also. And we can help you with that if you need help with that too. We are here to help you succeed, because in the end, it's our town that moves forward.
I take it we're all here to help the people of Warren.
Absolutely.
Beautiful.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have two things. One thing, I believe the Warren Ward District has to hang out with us more often.
We would like that.
And the second one is, being said that, I wanna extend the offer to all the departments of the town. If they are, they wanna use town alert, they are more than welcome to, like, parks, like the cemetery, you know, any other one there.
I got an interesting point there, is because of this construction going on up there at Cummings Pond, there will be no swimming this year. All right, so what has to happen, though, is that the water department only requested it until, I do believe, June of this year. So it will be, at that point in time, open again for discussion, but the construction still won't be done. So we're going to have it extended until that construction is complete.
So there will be no swimming at Cummings Pond?
I think we left it as we're going to see this summer, like in June, where we are in the construction stage, because our concern is residents becoming injured with the heavy equipment. So who knows?
And nobody wants that either.
We may be working inside at that point.
But I don't know if you noticed, Cummings Pond is a big thing for this town.
I know. We know.
I know my kids swim there, so, you know.
Well, we're gonna park, though. I mean, I mean, I have construction vehicles left there, right there, and, you know, what if somebody just parks in front of somebody's truck and they gotta get.
And we gotta get the project done. We don't want the project being held up. And maybe there's another thing we can look at. Maybe we can do like a, maybe get with Parks Department and set up like a temporary water park for the kids, to do something like that.
Right, well, we would have.
But that's something we could talk to the water department and look at something that we can do. But there's options out there. We'll figure it out.
I just, I can't, I can't, my crystal ball, batteries might be going to death, but I can't foresee there ain't being any trucks there for that construction of that facility at this point in time, come even June. They're going to be there.
But we'll be back before then. We'll be back to see you before then.
Definitely. We need to make this more regular and talk, and you guys can update everybody else.
I'm glad you're good at construction meetings with us.
Yep, I've been attending the construction.
He's been very good. He's been our representative over there. You know, we all have our jobs, and we're all doing different parts, because we all can't do it by ourselves alone and do everything.
So I'm a real.
We have each representative doing something.
I'm a real calendar guy. What are you thinking? Every three months you wanna see us?
Sooner.
Every two months? Once a month?
Yeah, every other month. I don't know. Every month.
We can do every other month.
Every other month or as needed.
Okay. Hey, just give Carol a call.
The door is open for everybody.
Yeah, and if you guys, you guys ever need to come, just talk to us or say something in front of town and bring it up. You know, get on camera, come see us. You know, talk to us.
Just ask Karen to put you on the agenda.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have an open door policy on that, so.
Great. Thank you.
So you guys have anything else for us?
I think we're good.
Okay, do you have anything?
No. Good, sir.
Anybody on Zoom have any questions for the water department? Beth, you have anything? No? Is that it?
Have you had anybody else?
That's the only one.
That's the only one?
It's you that, it's Beth's private communication.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys can stay or?
I'm gonna go eat.
Have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So we're on to cemetery commission on approval for help. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, you're back up.
Cindy Baxter.
Hold on.
Cindy Baxter, clerk, the Cemetery Commission. It's, we just had our, just had our first meeting Saturday, and we were discussing opportunities to have people come in and help at cemetery. I am, I work with a program called JustServe.org website, and we are putting together plans, you know, to have an activity in cleaning, help cleaning the cemeteries. But it was brought to my attention that, by Mr. Brunk, that he thought there was a concern with liability to have people come in, he said in the past, we've heard that there's a problem with liability, a question of liability, so I kinda reached out to Tim O'Brien, because I served down with, down at Lucy Stone with him, and he said over the past seven years, he's had literally hundreds of volunteers, adults and children, plus three Eagle Projects, biology students from the high school, and members of the armed forces, as well as Suffolk Prison System people to come out and help. Um, we, the, they serve under the Cultural Council, the CERT program, the Friends of the Town Hall, the Senior Center, all of these groups have volunteers. So they're all covered by something, as a matter of fact, our water department has checked with our insurance carrier, and they said that if we have volunteers up at Cummings Pond, like raking in preparation for opening up the pond and just cleaning in the fall and that kinda stuff to keep it looking nice, that we're actually covered with our insurance liability, but they suggested a waiver. So my question is, and I have some minutes from 2009 Cemetery Commission meeting where they approved to have Boy Scouts up there, straightening out the stone wall and picking up sticks. So it's been done in the past, but I believe the commissioners wanna have some, some input from you, some authorization, some understanding as to whether that's acceptable or not. I do have a copy of a waiver form that we received for the water district that we can use. It's, it's just a generic form, listing participant, date of birth, address, guardianship and all that. And I understand that I'm not holding the town accountable. The, I've done work with the Wolverhamm Parks and Recreation Department, they have a waiver signed when they have volunteers serving there. On the Ludlow DPW has a hold not at no harm, it's, it's another waiver form. So in order for us to go forward at the cemetery and use the many, I, I heard that there were many organizations that had asked in the past if they could come up and help. In order for us to be able to use that help and go forward with volunteers, what is it we have to do to understand that we're covered, for people to be able to go in there and pick up sticks and rake, not use equipment, but is that, what is that covered under for liability? Is that covered under the town? Do we need to have a waiver? But it's, it's a question that, that we have, and we'd really like to go forward and be able to let the community come in and help us take care of that, because that's our heritage, is what's at the cemetery. We do have Boy Scouts that go up there, and according to Mrs. Dusty here, we have Boy Scouts up there putting up flags, and they do go up and they do pick up sticks. What is, who, who are they operating under as far as liability? Is it possible for us to allow people to come in and help us under our supervision to just keep it looking, looking nice? So that's our question.
So as far as volunteers going up there and doing the flags and stuff, I believe that's the Veterans Council that was having that done, and they would get volunteers to go up there, and sometimes they would get Boy Scout troops to, to help them out and stuff. As far as having volunteers, I think it's awesome to have volunteers within the town. We should encourage that. We just approved a volunteer firefighter program, well, not volunteer, what is it? Junior fighter program, for the fire department, to get them, get the younger kids more involved in that. And same thing with cemetery, if you can get volunteer support, I think that's great to do. You know, our, our whole town is on pretty much volunteering. You know, that, that's why a majority of your elected officials are here, because they wanna do something good. And anytime you can get Boy Scouts or anything, I encourage that. So, I don't know if you guys have any issues with it or any input?
Let me, um. Let me put it this way. When me and my family moved ten, eleven years ago, and we were in the middle of the move, Sister Baxter, that's how I know her, because we joined the same church, she came to our house and gave us a full meal. And that was very special for me and my family. I think what she's doing now is just that kindness of special that she does all the time. And to me, support on this situation, it, it's really good, not only for her, for the cemetery, but for all the town. I, I have no objection about the waiver, if you need help with the waiver, I can, I can help you make one waiver online, so you can do that too. Can put it on their website and everything.
Don't we already have a waiver? So we already have a waiver, we can give you a copy of that.
Okay.
That came through our legal council, correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Because it, as the Cemetery Commission, then you'd be under the town's liability policy, so. Yeah, you just need a waiver, you get people to sign it.
Now, would the volunteers be limited to townspeople? I mean, some organizations from, okay.
No, you're not paying them, there's no benefits, there's nothing, whoever wants to volunteer, if somebody from Europe wants to come all the way to Warren to clean up our cemetery, God bless them.
Well, this makes me, this makes me very happy, because I thought that was the case, but going forward as a new member on the commission.
That is the senior program, if they're doing the senior abatement program, then they must be a resident of the town, because then we're doing tax abatement, they're working their tax bill off, so that's the only requirement. But as far as volunteering in the town.
Wonderful.
To do cleanup?
I think in the case of Lucy Stone, Tim has had people from all over.
Yeah, people from all over the world or something, he's.
Yeah, and I only mention that just.
Far away, and I've been there.
I only mention that.
Brazil, right?
Guatemala.
Guatemalan.
I only mention that in case that question comes up, well, do they have to be townspeople? So I'm just trying to go back to the board.
Yep. What about, uh, James McKeon?
Identify yourself.
He's the superintendent, does all the general care, along with.
Hold on, let me get you on camera.
I'm gonna start again.
There you go, yeah.
Yes, I'm James McKeon, I do some of the, superintendent of cemetery, take care of the actual physical side of it. There is a lot of things that they could do, help with straightening stones and finding the ground markers, picking up sticks. My only other thing is, would they be allowed to do power equipment?
Probably not.
So these volunteers would be just doing raking, picking up sticks.
Or edging of the stones?
Edging stones.
Use of a power equipment and stuff like that, I think would put it at a higher risk.
Right, very good.
And if they don't know how to operate that equipment, and they weren't trained, you know, it could set us up to a higher liability. I think as long as you keep it, you know, regular, picking up sticks, edging.
During, during the year.
Doing stacks and stuff, you know, fall down, you can get fixed out.
But I, I appreciate this very much, because this is, this is something that I think we've wanted to do there for some time, and we just needed clarification, so I, I thank you for that. I'll stop in and see Karen and get a copy of that, that waiver, and we'll be good to go.
And again, if you want that waiver online, just get in touch with me, I'll make it online so you can share that with people before they show up.
Correct, yes, we'll do that.
And again, you also have a site on the website, the cemetery, that you can use that for information too, and we can put the waiver on there and put, we're looking for volunteers, and do the same thing. You know, you, you can always get the message out to more people too.
And we, we actually, this, what we're looking forward to trying to do is, is a, is a large group through the JustServe.org website, to be coming down to help, in particular, the pine grove, but I've also been in contact with someone for St., St. Paul's, because they're right next to us, into working to give them a hand in cleaning up too. Hopefully, this will happen like April 23rd, we're hoping. We have to finalize the details, but, you know, and then going forward, we're gonna leave that opening available for people to contact us on that website. It's a just, it's called JustServe.org. The Lucy Stone is on there, we have the Berry Cross listed on there, we have a couple of cemeteries in Spencer listed on there, and anyone within a radius, like say I wanna do something to serve within a 25 mile radius, I put my zip code in this site, and it brings me there, and it shows me, lists all the things that I can do. Some things are done within your home, knitting or sewing or those kinda things. Some things are done on site, you actually just sign up to say, okay, I'm coming, or you know, this is, this is the time that I'm available to come, and you, you go there and you meet the people that you're gonna serve with. I've just recently put the Ronald McDonald House in Springfield on this website so that people can actually go there, sign up to work in whatever it is they need, whether it's painting or eating the, the people with, figuring out the, how to maneuver the medical systems and those kinda things. So this is a website that goes from east coast to west coast, and we're, we're growing this free website, and we're, so we can in town benefit from that ourselves, as well as reaching out to our own, own members in our own community to, to come forward and help whenever they can, so excited to put that on there.
So by the way, the Cemetery Commission site needs to be updated too.
Yeah, what do you get on there for members?
I couldn't, because you have to put Cindy in it.
Yeah, you'd have to add Cindy as a, well, you can add people.
No.
Yeah, you can.
No.
Yeah, you can.
No, you gotta add her, add, add the person into the system. And then once you do that, you can get the person permissions, whether they don't have any commissions to do any of that on the site, but they have to be in there to be able to do it.
Yeah, I'm just talking about regular members that you might not give that permission to.
No, you can't add them in there.
I tried.
This has got, this has doubled up.
I know, I know, I tried.
So, if you can send me an email.
I'm paying a little bit here and there, but I know that got a little mixed up.
If you can send me an email of who your current members are and what their positions are, I can update.
That's why it's doubled, because I was trying to do a discussion.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
If we can figure out why it's doubled.
Yeah, that's me, I can go in and fix it.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, I'm happy to be part of the Cemetery Commission, they're good folks, and, and we're moving forward, and I think we had a good meeting. And we're gonna, scheduled to have another one, the first Saturday in, in March, and I think we made progress, and. We had it, yeah, yeah, it's, it's all good, it's all good.
Excellent.
Very good, and thank you very much for volunteering.
Yes.
No problem.
Thank you. And congratulations on the new job.
Goodbye.
Have a good night. Okay. Have a good night. Okay. Now, James McKeon for Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, about our comprehensive emergency management plan. So you got a brief for us?
Yes, okay.
If you wanna come up here, just to make it easy, I'll turn the camera on you.
Okay, so, this really doesn't have. Okay, I'm James McKeon, the Emergency Management Director and CERT leader. This, this though, tonight I'm dealing with is the Warren, Town Warren's Emergency Plan. Every town in Massachusetts has this. It's just basically a framework of emergency, I guess togetherness, everyone being on the same page. Biggest part of this, so is what NEMA has done, is they went around to basically every town. I've been starting, I've been working with our representative since August. It's about an 80-page framework through all different ways of, just a layout of emergency. Basically establishes the frame, overall framework, coordination of emergency management and response activities, fills, fills, facilitate coordinate response any emergency or event in the community requiring a multi-agency support. That would be if, basically, all the departments from our records treasurer to town clerk, to you guys, all being united on the same page, knowing. And that's why I'm here tonight, just to basically get the signatures of you guys and the chiefs. I'm gonna go through and get more of the town's signatures, and then it's established through the state.
So, so you have an emergency response plan?
That's all set up, that you worked on?
Yep.
And that's what you're proposing tonight to us?
To basically sign it, it is in an email, I think, to you guys. Like I said, it's like 80 pages to kind of go through it. It basically just needs to be signed and put in place, and then it's through the state too. It's known as Warren, Warren's all, would be all set on that front. And then every year or so, I'll try to go back in and make sure it's updated with, you know, the current board members, chiefs, proper phone numbers, contacts. That's the biggest thing after everything is just kinda laid out.
Did you guys get a chance to read it?
Yeah, I've been through it, I mean, I'm familiar with some of it, our representative, you know, for me, but we have, it's kinda been a revolving door there, they've had some people that have been out and stuff. But basically, it takes into account the facilities themselves, capabilities, generators, you know, everything that, that the town and the assets that the town has to be able to, you know, be self-sufficient in, during emergencies, working with different boards, you know, there's just a lot that goes into that, that package. It just takes a, basically puts a microscope on the town to see what their capabilities are for equipments and, and things like that, for the most part. It's also required to have.
By signing this, Jimmy, what are we?
Sorry, guys, can you just identify yourself and your position in the town?
Atable boy, fire chief.
Jim, I'm a left, please, chief.
Thank you.
Jimmy, by signing this, what are we getting out of this?
It's really not, it's basically everything we have, it's just basically.
Acknowledging?
Acknowledging.
Well, can I have you get anything from?
No, but down the road, you know, say, some grant comes up and say, oh, does the town have the, the emergency plan up to date? That might, that's gonna help us, so.
And I have seen that on a couple of grants that I'm looking to.
In order to be eligible for some of that stuff, the town has to complete certain procedures, master plan procedures, emergency procedures, all of those things need to be in place and current in order for the town to compete for certain things down the road. So it's like an infrastructure bill. So, it's like an infrastructure bill in order to get there. So you have to kind of complete this stuff from time to time in order to stay current so that you can be locked into, you know, working with NEMA, having assets for, you know, sheltering operations and stuff like that down the road. If it's not current, the town could get zinged in certain, in terms of not being eligible for certain programs and stuff.
Did we get copies of this?
I don't remember getting a copy of this.
I'll send it to you.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't do. I don't remember seeing it. Do you?
I believe we didn't get it, 'cause I don't remember.
Did you just send it to me or did you send it to me?
I think I sent it to the selectmen general.
That's why I'm for, something, yeah.
Can you check to see if we got it?
Yeah, I'll check right after.
There's two different, well, it's three different parts, the selectmen and then the signature page of it, that I gotta go around and try to get all the department heads with. But there is two different parts, the approval stuff that we get the board to actually.
Jim, when would you have sent it? I'm trying to find it now.
I got it. I can forward to you.
Oh, Sat, okay, yeah.
I think Saturday after.
Yeah.
But I think it probably just went to the selectmen, I guess.
Yeah.
I picked forward it.
Well, if Karen's got it, she can send it.
It didn't go to, it didn't go to Karen. It went to, yeah, it went to myself, Jerry, Tammy, Dawn, Jeremy, Brianna, Nancy, Sharon, and Brett Castillo. Somehow it didn't get on that list.
He just got it.
Yeah.
I just sent it to you.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I didn't get it either, so, I'm looking at Saturday, so. Yeah, if we.
Hey, look at that, I got it.
We got it first.
Derek got it first. It's no fair. His best, or, yeah.
Better way five of this.
So, so with this one, because we, none of us have read it, the selectmen yet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, typically, this is a draft, so.
Okay.
This is the proposal, you know.
So what we'll do is we'll table this one. We're gonna review it. And then we'll have you back in when we're, we might have some questions or back and forth with you about it, but once, once we're all set, we can schedule a meeting and we'll sign it, we'll vote to sign it for that. But right now, you know, we can't sign until we read the thing.
Well, that's why with all these people on, that's why I sent it to them.
Yeah.
Hoping that they get a chance to go through it, or at least they're part of it.
So everybody has to sign off on it?
Yes, on this, the signature page.
Oh, wow, okay.
And you guys got two different pages. You can see it in the email, these two different, my signatures here, and my signature. There's one page here saying that, once you guys approve it, like it, then, like, I, we can update it yearly as changes, as, say, new equipment gets introduced to the town or new services or whatever. Daniel, how are you?
Okay. Alright, good.
Did you have anything else?
One other thing with, I got quite a few, I think 4,095 masks.
I did see that email.
Through the MEMA. Now that you got them in the building, maybe I can release some of them to the different departments so they have. People that come in the building that don't have a mask, you can put some at the door because we got a couple of these masks on the map.
Very good.
At least in here, I don't know if you're opening the senior center, too, they can have some.
Yeah, that's great. And, you know, I figure, you know, if we're open up the town, we're opening up the senior center, but we're also leaving that to the discretion of, you know, Sharon over there. Sorry, I'm gonna turn the camera. We're gonna leave that to the discretion of Sharon, too, because she knows her senior population best on that. But I think I am okay with going the same guidance as opening up the town, but they are also a more vulnerable population, so she might have a little more insight if she wants to hold off a little longer for her population.
So like I say, anyone that needs the masks or whatever, if you, you know, open in here, put some of them out over this weekend, either, too, because they also.
And that's back over to you.
Police and fire need them.
Mr. Chairman, too, just so you know, this is Daniel Tivod, he just walked in. This is the gentleman that was appointed to the Board of Health earlier, if you had any questions.
Congratulations.
Just wanted you to know who he was and, you know, why he's probably here. But I just let him know that appointment took place earlier.
Yeah, you're in.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you. Did you have anything else?
That's pretty much it on this, so I'll let you guys read over that draft. Don't have any questions or whatever, or the chiefs, maybe I'll answer some things, too.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for that. And do you guys have any questions for?
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment. I've been working with Jimmy for a long time now. I met him at the CERT team. I think it's a fascinating thing going on. They gave us a presentation to the public many years ago and I think what they do is wonderful. I'm excited to read what you sent.
The other thing about the CERT is I'm always, you know, looking for someone to be interested in helping that aspect, too. We take volunteers, go through some training, CERT training and stuff.
Yeah, I'm very excited to read what we have, because it, all what they do is wonderful things. It's incredible.
It's been difficult for the last year or two trying with all this COVID stuff, even trying to have regular meetings, but hopefully in March or in the spring, we can restart, have monthly meetings and stuff again and help out public events.
We are all in this together, sis. We will get there. I was in Walmart yesterday, everything was empty. We are all in this together. We're gonna, we'll do it.
Did you wanna talk about how to get somebody to volunteer real quick? If, how to volunteer for CERT?
Well, if anyone's interested, if a shelter was ever needed in town, if a shelter was activated through the town, we probably need help running that mostly. The CERT training is, there's actually one, I think, down in, there's another group, Tri Epic, down in Charlton or Sturbridge, and they've been starting up some CERT classes. We had some classes up in the branch where we took, some of our members. And there's also some, an online training, too, an introduction to CERT. You know, there's some videos and basically how we can assist the fire and police and.
So if somebody's interested in joining CERT, who do they contact?
If you wanna try, contact me. I, probably by email. My email is McKeon@Warren.gov. Probably, I think, actually, if you go on the website, there's a section of CERT.
Yeah, so I was gonna say.
You might be active.
So normally, there's that menu bar up at the top, if you wanna find the town clerk or, you know, the tax collector or something, but there's a bunch of buttons under Citizen Action Center on the homepage. The second button on the left, or on the right, is the CERT button. And if you click that, that brings you to their page. And then it has all the information about it, who the contacts, got some Jim's info on there.
There's also, if you wanna go, like, on YouTube and stuff, there's some videos of what CERT can do and help out and how. It started a lot in disasters, like if the tornadoes came through, people, neighbors helping neighbors. And you were somewhat trained, you know, some people don't go near live wires or you can maybe try to search and, you know, see if your neighbor was stuck under something in the garage, you know.
But like CERT's, like if the tree lighting, CERT was there, like directing traffic.
And that's why we, our group, we kind of are going towards, like, more of them are with the police, helping crosswalks. We do it in West Brookfield, too, for them. Public events. And that gets us hours for grants.
Oh, the Halloween, the Locked It House you did, right?
Yes, so we've helped all, Parks Department, concerts, all their events.
The movie night.
Yep, movie nights.
All the events at the schools.
A lot of parking.
They're everywhere.
That's what we try to, it is a big thing, if you, no one's around to direct people sometimes, they can be, chaos can happen, 10 cars pile up and no one knows what to do. That's kind of what we do. If anyone's interested, please reach out to me or reach out, even you can call speed and reach out to one of the chiefs, they can send them my way.
Okay, alright, good.
Alright, so if anybody's interested in joining CERT, contact James McKeon and he will help you out. Send him an email. You can get his email off of the website, town website, under the CERT link. Alright, well, thank you very much, James. You.
I'll just leave these with Jared. Thank you.
Okay, next thing we got is selectmen's budget and base skills. So, with that, we have several items in our budget, which, we don't have a copy of this, I think.
I never got that copy.
I brought my own copy.
Did you get a copy from?
It was either handed to me or mailed to me.
Nope, handed, oh, you're talking that copy.
Yeah.
I'll get you a copy, David.
Can you please?
I think this was in my folder or something, right?
No, it was on the table three weeks ago.
Do you have a copy of it? I think I gave out my copy to each of you, 'cause I gave you half, Selectman A, Selectman B.
Yeah, I don't think my name is.
Yeah, I have A, B, C.
Okay, you have all of them. I split up my copy. I'd say we move on to something else until she gets back, but we need her.
I mean, I can do warrants and bills or?
Well, she needs to do the minutes and the motions. Just remember with the bills, you gotta identify the terms, the acronyms.
Yes.
Maybe we can take a break at this point?
We can do that. I think it's a good time.
Good time to take a break?
Yeah.
And they can switch that ball.
Alright, we're gonna take a five-minute break and we'll pick back up here in, like, five minutes. Well, we're gonna have to change tapes anyways.
So just, yeah, okay.
Let's, let's take a five-minute break and we'll go from there. Derek needs one, too. So. Starting back up again in selectmen's budget now. Um, there's been some few changes that have gone on with our budget and we can go down line item after line item. And kind of go through each thing. And just go through as far as the numbers for 2023. I think the moderator stays the same.
Yep.
Hasn't changed anything with that. So same with that. Selectmen's salary, none of us deserve a raise, you know, as well as we work our butts off, but. You know, we can't take a raise when. You know, everything else going on. You agree with that?
Oh, I, I think we should just take it away, but that's okay. We can keep it.
So we're good with that. Selectmen expense.
Inspector. What was, oh, it's payments, yeah. Sorry.
The expense, their expense account. Um, how are we doing on that?
Yeah, is this a good number, seven thousand?
That depends upon, um. How we do with a couple other, like the generator expense and the boiler, the boiler maintenance. If we bump those up, then the selectmen's expense is okay.
Well, yeah, we're gonna have to bump those up because we're taking over all those items. But that means those expenses are going away for the other departments.
Right.
Senior center, um, the old town hall, um, fire department. You know, they, they won't have those under their budgets anymore because it's all underneath us. Cause it's contract now.
Right.
So we'll bump that up.
Seven thousand.
So seven thousand is adequate for us? Okay, so keep that as that same. The electrical inspector. I don't know. I don't know if he needs any more money or if that's been a concern. We haven't reached out to him really.
Got him.
Yeah.
And he doesn't make his money out of.
He is a good, yeah. But, um, he hasn't brought anything to us about that. So I don't think we could really make a decision on that one yet.
Question mark and reach out to him?
Yeah, reach out to him.
On all three of those.
Yeah. On all three of those expenses.
Yeah, the two hundred is probably just for miscellaneous stuff, so that's probably fine. I don't know, alternate electrical inspector.
That's if he does a job, he cannot inspect it himself. He has to ask someone else come in and inspect it.
Okay. The conflict of interest. So we gotta see if that's still good for him, that amount, if he's even using that amount. Or if there needs to be more in there, because I know with everything going up, the rates are going up for everybody, so. Uh, facilities custodian. I know we're looking at, um, adding, uh, a maintenance person to broaden that. And not just have a custodian, but do a building maintenance person, because right now the town has no building maintenance person. Jim, Jim Dusty has been doing it. But it's not like an official thing through the town. He's been doing it as a custodian. But yet he's been working with maintenance contracts and because he's in all the buildings and that's kind of a role he kind of took on. But technically, that position should be a building maintenance, um, person. And I don't know if we eliminate the building custodian position.
Make him part time.
Make him, make a building maintenance person and then just do. Like, like Karen said, a part time custodian for the building.
Yeah.
And is that for each building? Does Jim do all the town buildings? Okay.
Does he do fire?
He does some, so, I mean, we, we pretty much take care of our own stuff. He will come over now and do some stuff. But most of the time he's usually a PD or here. You know, he, he does come into the fire department building and he'll change a few things out and everything. But we really don't have someone for a set amount of hours. We've always done our own.
Cleaning or is he doing maintenance?
Uh, I mean, he, it's not regular. It's just, I mean, he may stop in to see, like, if he's overseeing a, a boiler project or something, he'll be.
But that's maintenance.
Yes, okay, then he's, he's around with contractors. He's making sure that something is done. So yes, he's in there for that, but it's not, it's not custodial stuff. It's, we've done that ourselves. It's, it's more maintenance on the, you know, making sure that the vendors get in to do their work and stuff, yes.
So, so I'm thinking, let, let's make it a maintenance position. And go from there and probably have a part time custodian. Or if he wants to still do that, the custodian part time, what he wants to do. But what we really need is a maintenance person, because again, the buildings have so much maintenance going on. And we really don't have a person doing that. And that's where the town has been lacking seriously. Is because things like our boilers, nobody's ensuring, nobody officially is ensuring that the boilers are being kept up. The wheelchair lifts, you know, it's not really a custodian's job. That's a maintenance.
Right, I think a custodian is just cleaning, right?
Custodian is cleaning, doing restrooms, taking out trash baskets, mopping floors, things like that. Where Jim does so much more beyond that scope. And to be honest, we'd be lost without him if he wasn't doing it, cause if he had to bring a contractor in here to do every single little thing that he does. This town would be in debt like bad, cause that would, we know just every time we bring in a contractor for something, it's thousands of dollars. For something simple. He's doing that because it's kind of taken on the maintenance role.
So do, um, uh, do we, can we just create a position or does this have to be approved on a town, in town meeting?
We would probably have to do a town meeting for that to do that or vote on that, um, to create that position. But I'd be high pressed for somebody not to say, the guy's been doing it the whole time and why, why don't we need it, you know?
Yeah.
Cause we really do. Every town has a maintenance guy, you know? I would say, let's split down and put a motion on the floor. And do a maintenance man, you know, probably a part time custodian to help out with those issues.
So then what about the budget number?
Yes, sir.
You good with that, Rich?
Yeah.
Jim, got it? Question?
Wanted to officially title this job, just a suggestion. You could use facility coordinate coordinator. Uh, that's unknown.
That means more buildings, that would be better.
Facility, it covers facility and everything. It's, it's just something to think about.
Okay. Facility coordinator?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so.
And then what about?
We'll look into splitting that one.
Are we just gonna take the amount? Like, what are we gonna do about the amount there?
Well, we're gonna have to. Reach out to other towns in the area and see how much they pay. For their facility guys.
Oh, I think I have that already.
Do you have that already?
Want me to give it?
Sure. There you go.
That also came from MMA.
Yep. So from MMA, the medium salary, median salary is forty nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy four dollars. But you're looking at other towns and say Plymouth, seventy one thousand, Essex, sixty three thousand. You know, they're all, they're all up there, but they're bigger towns.
And wealthier towns.
Wealthier towns.
Much bigger too.
Yeah, much bigger, so.
We are only, close to five thousand residents. Take Plymouth, Plymouth probably is around fifteen.
So where the payscale.com for a facilities manager is average sixty eight thousand, base salary forty five thousand. But that's through the country. So yeah. Yeah, that's a facility director. And that's ninety two thousand dollars a year. That's for big cities. That's big city money. Do you want to look at that?
Sure.
So how much that per year though? How much is it for, how many hours does he put in?
Forty.
So he puts in forty hours, so it's full time. He actually works more than other full time employees. So.
Well, it's nineteen twenty, right? About, uh, thousand one hundred and twenty hours in a year. I think is the standard.
Yeah.
So. If you look at thirty two.
He makes fifteen, forty six now.
How much?
Fifteen dollars and forty six cents an hour.
The current line item would cover about sixteen dollars, sixty seven cents.
If it was thirty two.
Yeah, so you'd take thirty two thousand divided by nineteen twenty, right? Sixteen sixty seven. So if we're gonna bump that up a little bit.
Well, he shouldn't be making below minimum wage. That's.
Right.
That's ridiculous. The people, again, people at McDonald's are making more money than that.
And he's doing a significantly awesome job.
Doing an amazing job. We'd be, we'd be so, we'd be wasting so much money trying to get everybody, contractors in here to do this job. And do what he's doing on an everyday basis and not even saying a word about it. You know, he gives us briefs every, you know, al- almost every meeting. Right now he's, he's out. And I don't know if we want to put out in the public why he's out.
It doesn't matter. Everybody, I think everybody probably knows, he had knee replacement surgery.
So Jim Dusty had knee replacement surgery on Monday, right?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. So he's recovering from his knee replacement surgery and he'll be back to work. Probably before his doctor is saying he should be because he's that tie hard. But he should really take the time to rest his knee.
He can rest his knee and still get contracts done.
He, he could.
That's what he said.
But you know he's not gonna just do contract. He's gonna start picking up something. He's gonna start moving something. And the next thing you know, you know, Adam's gonna be in here bringing him to the hospital.
I told him he has to be back and I had him shipped by Wednesday.
And he said, okay.
And you know it's something he probably will be.
Has he done any research on what someone of his position would get paid?
He has. He said that, um, it was more than what he expected from the town because he knows the town. So he says it, usually right around between, um, forty thousand and sixty thousand, but he doesn't want that much.
Forty, okay. Well, I think. The meat, the average is forty five. You know, for smaller towns. And how much is that per hour?
What, you say which number?
If you do forty five thousand. Per hour.
That's twenty three, like twenty three and a half dollars an hour. So we could just go to twenty four. Or twenty five maybe?
What's your input?
I like thirty, but twenty five is okay. He, he does such a wonderful.
He does do an awesome job. We're working within a budget too.
I understand. I understand. You can, you can fool my ears and, you know, say, Derek, be quiet.
No, 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 no.
I just think he deserves it.
He, he does.
I understand that, you know, we are under the budget, but you're one of my opinion. That's what, that's my opinion, cause he deserves it.
He, he does. So. You're thinking twenty five and all?
If you do twenty five, wait, did I do this right? It's nineteen. That would be forty eight thousand. What's this thing? It's still under the median, but. You know, so I don't know, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, something like that.
What are you more comfortable with?
Uh, you said three numbers. What about the one in the middle?
Twenty four? Twenty four. So that would be. Forty six thousand and eighty dollars.
I'm good with that.
Twenty four. I mean, he certainly, I mean.
Certainly worth more.
The work that he's done has been unbelievable.
I know he's at least saved, saved us that over the time he's been here.
Yeah.
So.
He's practically the, our salary altogether, the three of us.
Is he worth the three of us?
He does more than what we do physically.
Yeah, he does.
He does. So forty six thousand, eighty dollars. Is that what you're looking at?
Yep.
Now back up to the facility, if you're gonna do part time, you don't need that much money in there.
No, we don't need. You're, you're talking about for the janitor, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Because I think we could drop down the janitors. That could be dropped down to.
Well, what's minimum wage?
Minimum wage is like seventeen something an hour. Is it?
I thought it was fifteen.
No, Massachusetts.
How much is a day?
I think it's around fifteen.
I think it's around fifteen.
You looking it up?
Yeah.
But is, and is it a part-time position? Or we, we don't need a full-time custodian, right?
Well, if it does, right now, Jim does Shepherd Building, the police station, the highway.
Wow, okay.
So, he does all three of those.
Yeah, okay.
So.
So, Massachusetts' minimum wage is fourteen, twenty-five.
So, I think if you do it.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Yes, sir.
Do we still need this? Oh, probably not, right?
No.
You want me to turn it off?
We can.
Yep.
Thanks.
White noise kills me.
Yeah. What do you mean? White noise suits people sometimes. It's in the sleep. People have white noise machines.
Yeah, but that's like.
Why not when you're trying to follow a meeting?
True.
If you want me to fall asleep here, I may.
So, I'm thinking if we do.
So, we're kinda still back at that number then?
So, twenty-four hours, well, twenty-four hours a week. Because that would be part-time, right? Well, if we go down to sixteen.
I think you have to get under twenty.
For part-time?
For part-time. So, like nineteen.
Yeah, it's nineteen.
So, if we do nineteen hours a week. Yeah. Say fifteen dollars an hour.
So, it is forty-eight times nineteen. So, there's nine hundred and twelve hours in a year. What'd you say? Times?
Fifteen dollars.
Uh, thirteen, six, eighty. Is that right? Nine, twelve, times fifteen.
Yeah, probably pretty close to that.
That's where I guess so.
Say, what is it, thirteen, what?
Six, eighty.
But if you just did fifteen in case you have any kind of overtime.
Okay.
So, if you do fifteen thousand for that budget, then that drops that much more.
Which line are we now?
That's the custodian.
Facilities custodian, part-time.
And that would be doing each of the buildings. And that's a part, that would be a part-time position at fifteen dollars an hour. And their job only would be to clean buildings, do that stuff, and that's it.
Finish the floors.
Wash the floors and things like that. So.
We can't clean the old town hall anymore.
No. But, you know, you got, you get, you know, our building, you'll have the new police department.
Which is bigger than the one they have now.
Which is bigger.
And highway.
Have highway department, fire department. So, they'd have plenty of work during the week. They'd do a few hours each, each building, you know, a couple hours here, a couple hours there. They'd be busy. Yeah, one day each for the buildings, whatever. Or even if they split up their time, you know? So, I think that's a plan.
Okay.
It's really not too much more, and then it's actually filling the positions we need. All right, let's go with that. You got those numbers, right Karen?
I do.
All right. All right, moving on. So, the Shepherd Building expense. I think Jim was talking about how that was pretty much spot-on for the year.
Yeah, he's, he thought that going up just a little bit because of everything going up. So, going up to forty-five instead of forty, forty-two. Or going up to forty-four, just a little bit more, just to, because all the materials are going up, toilet paper and paper cals and soap and everything.
Right, okay. So, maybe forty-five?
Yeah. Okay. So, forty-five thousand for that. Okay, the the Old Town Hall. That, that budget, the repair. They got it at ten thousand now? I would say probably just keep it at ten thousand. So, we know what's going on.
Is that what we pay the utilities out of? Could we change it to town hall repair slash services? Because we have to pay the utilities once the police move out.
Yeah, because that was their budget. That was coming out of their budget.
Right.
Their budget is switching over to the new building.
Right.
So, and how much?
Well, we got.
Well, that's for repairs. I think we keep it at repairs.
Okay.
And then we need a new line item.
Yeah, the new line item.
Okay.
Which is gonna be. Yeah. The electric bill, heating, you know, oil and all that.
Town hall utilities or something?
Town hall utilities, yeah.
Yeah, because the, um, the people that come in and check for the mice, their prices is going up. To ninety-two dollars a year.
How much more?
Ninety-two. It's going up to ninety-two.
Up to ninety-two dollars?
Yeah, from eighty, uh-huh.
Well, it's still, I mean.
They're going up twelve bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
But I think just everything's going up.
Right.
Should pay by mice.
Huh?
That's right. Pay by the mouse.
Charge them per mouse. We don't wanna see a mouse for every single dollar.
Well, I guess the last time they had the rats.
Yeah.
Those cost double.
Is it the Norwegian rats there kinda? Yeah.
All right, so based on what the chief gave us. You know, the sewer, sewer doesn't change. Sewer is the sewer. You get charged no matter what. The water's gonna go down, the electrical go down, and then if we keep the building at a constant.
You gotta remember those rates are going up though.
Right.
The usage will go down.
Yeah.
But the rates are going up.
But you figure without that.
Right now, home heat, um, home heating oil. You, you work on heating oil?
Natural gas.
Natural gas, okay. So, I don't think that's going up so much more. I know home heating oil went up forty-six percent.
Yeah.
So.
But think about the electricity they use now, and once they're out of there.
Yeah.
There's, it's, it'll be like.
But the clock tower and everything else is still gonna be going, and you're still gonna maintain the lights in the building.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, it's not gonna be.
No, it's not gonna be in there, right?
The lights for the bridge go through there too.
Oh, the lights for the bridge go through that building. So, that's probably gonna still be up there.
He's almost had a six-thousand-dollar electric bill for the past couple of years. So, there's no way, it's not gonna be anywhere near that.
So, went on to five?
For electric bill?
I, I wouldn't go up, I wouldn't go down too much because we just don't know where it's going.
Yeah, I would, I would cut it in half.
I don't think it's gonna be half. What do you think?
There are a lot of computers in there, then lights that are on all the time.
I mean, you're in there twenty-four seven, right?
Yeah, but the LED lights, right?
Yep.
So, that's really not taking a whole lot.
Yeah, but computers are not LED lights.
No, computers suck up. So.
I would, I would say, let's just keep it the same, because something else may come in. You know?
Okay, so if we.
Okay, so.
So, if we, so that's just electric though. So, if we did like fifty-five hundred for electric. We did, the sewer is gonna be, um.
It's fixed.
Call it five four, it's four seventy-five.
Yeah.
Well, they got charged four thirty-one.
Because.
Just call it five hundred, right?
Yes.
The water use is gonna go way down, right?
The water use will definitely go down.
So.
But isn't there a minimum?
I don't think so.
Okay.
So, right now, as of seven months, uh, they're at four sixty-five. I mean, we could say four hundred for water. I'll bet that's probably a lot, even if no one's ever flushed a toilet in there. And then the, the gas for the heat is really hard to say. Yeah, look for it, maybe five thousand, just to be safe. So, FY twenty, they paid almost ten. FY twenty-one was eight thousand.
Chief, why don't you keep your thermostat up now?
Sixty-eight?
Okay.
Yeah, that's going down to fifty.
You're living in luxury in there.
It's a sauna. Why do you guys need heat?
Yeah, I've literally seen him wear a winter hat in office. I can vouch for that.
True story.
You know, you guys and all your heat now.
So, right now, they're on, on a forecast of actually spending less money for heat this year for some odd reason. It's actually been going down. FY twenty was about ten.
When did you get your number?
Was about eight.
Last.
Right now, they're looking to spend sixty-five.
In April. But we had the new boiler in between. So, it went down a little bit for the, with the new boiler.
When was the new boiler?
It's gonna be two years old in April.
Oh, yeah, well, maybe that's it, huh? More efficient or?
Absolutely.
And the, the generator's running off of that, right?
No, the generator has a, a gas tank on the side in between.
So, it's running off of propane?
Yeah, right next to the, um, peak place.
All right.
Still don't know why we didn't just hook that up to the natural gas.
It's right there.
Because we're burning.
So, we could just leave like six grand for gas. It's probably too much, but just to be safe.
Yeah. So, what are we looking at for total?
Twelve thousand, four hundred.
Six grand, right? We have six grand for gas, four hundred for water, five, fifty-five hundred for electric, and five hundred for sewer. Twelve thousand, four hundred. Yeah. I mean, we really won't know until.
Again, yeah, we won't know until, because we don't know the activity in the building. There shouldn't be as much activity in there.
Nope.
Because you guys are gonna be on, out of there, so.
Just because Dylan will have to go in and check to make sure the boiler's going.
Yeah, make sure the boiler's still on and make sure the heat's not, like, pipes aren't freezing and stuff.
Put some anti-freezer on the pipes.
So. Twelve thousand, four hundred?
Yeah.
I'm good with that. Okay. On top of the ten thousand, in case it is any repairs or anything for the building.
Yeah.
So. All right. So, technology, annual fees and supplies.
Would it be good for me to go get what we have spent so far, so you can know what we've spent so far this year?
Yeah, yeah.
Because Cammy just gave it to me today.
Okay, yeah.
All right, what are we on? Technology. All right, right now, so far, we have spent fifteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
Fifteen thousand, almost.
Yeah.
So, as of what date?
This is as of today, two nine.
And.
So, that's annual.
What are we into, like, eight months into the?
Mm-hmm, and we've only, we have fifty-one point fifty-seven percent left.
Oh, so.
We could probably just drop it down to twenty thousand. And then that will still cover any increases that happen. And we're taking ten grand off of that, saving ten grand.
What's our computer hardware software fees to that?
That's two thousand a month. It's right there, two thousand.
I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering, what is this? Do you think that was the annual fee supplies?
Computer hardware software. That's if we have to add something to the server, or we add a new software thing.
Did we spend any of that money this year?
Yes, we've spent eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
So, what, we could drop, I don't know that I would drop computer hardware software by, um, or, um, annual fee supplies by ten, maybe by five. Make it twenty-five thousand, but we could drop that computer hardware software by a couple thousand. Why would we drop that? Because we haven't, we've only used like eight hundred this year.
What, did you use it for?
Okay, she has that detail.
I don't have that detail.
But so that would pay for things like wifi.
It looks like it was a computer that was purchased for four or five hundred, and then a couple more computers that were purchased.
I mean, is that what the wifi in the gym is gonna come out of something like that, right?
Out of the technology one.
Oh, why would that come out of? Why wouldn't that come out of computer hardware?
Well, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, you're right.
So, let's just keep the computer hardware and then just drop it down, say five grand for the software.
The technology annual fees.
Yeah.
To twenty, yeah, I, I feel comfortable taking the five thousand. Twenty-five thousand.
The other one stay at five grand?
Yeah.
Okay.
We still, you know, in the back of your minds, keep thinking about moving the server up to the second floor. But we might be able to get a grant for that, so. That wouldn't take out of this money.
Okay, the selectman matching grant?
Yeah, what's that?
I don't know, but we adjusted it for another four thousand, so we have nine thousand in there right now, but we haven't. That's if you have a grant and you have to do a match.
And we have nine thousand, so.
We have nine thousand right now.
Then let's just zero that out.
Well, no, I'd say keep it at five grand, because we do have some matching grants coming up that we gotta do, right?
Mr. Chairman, I would not suggest cutting that line item. That should be, that should not only stay intact, but if anything, grow. Because you're, if you cut that, you're gonna limit your ability to take in grants, like the DCR grants we get. The town matches that money, the DCR reimburses a certain percentage. If that goes away, we can't even apply for those grants anymore, so.
So, then we'd be at fourteen thousand, right?
Right, because that, that's just banking it. Right, because that, that's just banking it. We're just...
Okay.
You would always wanna have money in that account, because you never know when these grants are gonna come out. And there are more, sometimes there's more each year. And if the money's not there, we, the, the grant can't go through. So I would suggest putting more in there than less.
Okay, alright, so we'll keep it at five.
Yeah, we'll just keep it at five and when we need it, that would actually give us the, because we'll get nine in there.
We have nine right now.
Right.
We throw another five thousand in. Okay.
So at least we have that option.
Okay.
So town report? Nancy hasn't said anything.
Printing costs are gonna go up if they haven't already. Maybe just bump this up to three thousand?
Well, I think the, yeah.
I don't think we need to go up to three thousand. If we go to twenty-eight, the printing, printing costs going up. But going up another four grand, I don't think that cost is going up that much.
No, not four grand, um, no, just add four hundred to it to get it to three thousand.
Oh, yeah, another four hundred. I think a couple hundred should do.
Okay.
So if we do twenty-eight?
Yeah, I'll do with that.
I'm good.
Unfortunately, costs are going up on everything, so.
Yeah.
And legally, we have to print that much?
Yeah, we have to print it. You know, publish the special town meeting? That's in the newspaper, right?
Mm-hmm.
And has that changed on us?
Mm-hmm.
How much has it gone up?
Because it's not, it's a hundred and twenty dollars.
So it's a hundred and twenty dollars now? So we'll go to a hundred and twenty for it then.
That's a big jump, holy moly. So what happens if we go to publish the town meeting and it's a hundred and fifty? What do you do?
I give them thirty dollars out of my pocket.
Reserve, okay, reserve account transfer.
Transfer, yeah.
Okay.
Because at that time, we can't, anything after April, we could transfer.
Okay, so the next part, you're taking over, Rich, I recuse myself from this.
Alright.
Because it's animal control. Can you make sure you put down that I recuse myself from the animal?
Yes, I will.
Alright, so. I talked to Tammy, Derek. She's not looking for any change in her salary, so that remains flat. She's got, um, some, you know, I can just hand this to you. She's tried to go through and just look at reasonable expenses. One thing we're gonna have to pay for is Baron Diamond's hotel stay. So that's in here. We try so hard. So. Take a look at this. I talked to her, so I can answer questions on that stuff. I, I think it's reasonable what she came up with. She's gonna talk to FinCon on Tuesday.
You know, for everything that she does for the town, I think this is very reasonable.
So she's looking for things like, you know, she's gotta put dogs in her car. Animals.
She had to get a phone.
Your trash, right, she needs a phone. She's asking for a little bit of money for clothing in case, you know, again, you know, a dog like rips her uniform apart. Or she's crawling into a pen or into a fenced-in area and, you know, rip something. What else is there? Oh, just, yeah, she does training. And she just left a little buffer miscellaneous for some stuff. The only thing is, I wonder, well, we can set this budget. The Baron Diamond thing is gonna be a one-time fee. I guess we put that in her budget. And, um, it'll just come out next year.
Yep.
But I told her to break that out, because really, what, what she wants is about fifteen hundred for boarding and veterinary care. And then the rest of that number is Baron Diamond, so.
So do you have a total for me on her animal control expense?
Fifteen thousand, five hundred.
Fifteen thousand, five hundred.
And basically, that animal control expense goes away.
Okay. And then how about the?
So I guess, well...
What's her salary?
Well, okay, so let me give it this way. Her salary is eight thousand. So we'll put that in for the salary line. Which is no increase. And then the rest of it is seventy-five hundred for expenses. I guess we can do it that way.
Okay.
Animal control expense.
Right.
And alt-regional animal control officer just goes away. You okay with?
Yeah, probably round it to five hundred.
So make it eight thousand.
Okay. Because she might need new pens, she might need, you know, you don't...
She's got some office supplies, but again, this is like her first year.
Pins, I need pins to put the animals in.
Yeah, right, yep.
It's my southern accent, sorry.
Five hundred in pens?
Yeah. Boy, those are nice pens.
They are, they're really nice.
Okay.
Alright, and then, you know, next year, she'll probably be able to do a more realistic budget, so. But I think she's, I, you know, like I said, I talked to her and I think these are good numbers. She seems pretty confident on them.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, we're done with animal control.
Alright, I'll come back.
So we're at Memorial Day slash Veterans Programs.
Okay. Alright. So. Veterans Council hasn't asked for any more money, has it?
Do we have a number on that somewhere?
I don't have that on these sheets for some reason.
Well, I guess let's keep it the same and...
Keep it at the three grand.
Until we unless we can figure something else out.
The baseball, basketball, softball, soccer, football, all those programs, I think we can just keep them at five hundred.
Yeah.
You know, Mr. Chairman, that would be really good, because this organization suffers so much. And they struggle and they try to get donations from, you know, have support from all companies and everything, and this is, uh, they really appreciate it that the town gives them five hundred dollars.
So it's for uniforms or supplies, whatever?
Yeah, to paint if they need new walls, anything.
Yeah, okay.
Mostly equipment to paint the fields. Because the uniforms, they get paid by, you know, each individual that pays a...
Oh, a fee, yeah.
A fee. But they need to get, you know, balls, nets. I'm, I'm thinking about the soccer, because that's what I, that's what I'm involved with.
Yeah.
You know, paint the fields or, you know, do a final ceremony and give medals to the kids, things like that.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'm good with it staying at the five hundred. Okay, parking clerk's salary. Did we get anything on?
Millie has not given me anything.
What is that?
It's our parking clerk. Who does all the tickets. When they write tickets and stuff, she enters them in.
Yep. She enters them in, she takes payments. She does everything, she works, she works hard. At least three hours, two to three hours every week.
Okay. How much does she get paid an hour?
I don't know.
Well, if you do two to three, let's say three.
She's scheduled for two, but sometimes she's in here at three, but, yeah.
That'd be like almost fifty-eight hundred dollars.
How much?
Wait, wait, what am I doing?
She makes seven hundred.
Yeah, what are you doing? She's only making seven hundred dollars a year.
No, hold on a sec, what am I calculating? You said three hours?
Two hours.
Oh, a week?
A week.
Oh.
So that's two weeks.
A hundred and forty-four hours a year.
That's like two dollars, three dollars.
No.
She gets seven hundred?
She has seven hundred.
It's like four...
Yeah, it's like four dollars an hour.
Eighty-six cents, yeah.
So she just paid a stipend?
Yep.
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah, you can't even...
She's given a monthly stipend?
Well, she actually takes it twice a year, three hundred and fifty dollars twice a year.
And she's good with that?
Well, she hasn't said anything to me.
Can we round that to a thousand?
Chief? I don't know, I actually have no involvement with her.
Well, I, we should find out from her what.
Okay, I'll ask her.
Do a question mark on that, because she's been getting that for years.
I know she needs a little bit more for expense, because she said she needed a stapler. And I said, well, I can buy you one, and she goes...
Give her a stapler.
I did.
Give her two. A backup.
And then she wanted to know if she could have...
That's her major expense?
Yeah. She wanted to know if she had a Keyleth keyboard, because her keyboard sticks. And I said, didn't they just give you a new keyboard when we got you a new computer? And she goes, no, and I went, oh, gosh.
Really? So let's get her a new keyboard.
She just got it in a closed office.
Is she back there right now?
Just knock on the door, see if she's in. Why don't you see the door? It's coming next week.
No, she actually... She was so excited to be back over to where she used to be.
That's good, let's keep her happy.
Alright, so we'll just put that on hold until we hear more.
And her expense, what does she look, she only got a hundred dollar expense a year.
That has to buy ridiculous amount of stuff, I'm thinking, really. So I'll talk to her and I'll get back to you.
Yeah, find out what she needs for expense, too. Because she, if she's buying stuff out of her own pocket, when she's only making seven hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, that's not fair.
No.
Okay. She'll be thrilled.
Alright.
Generator?
That's our contracts for generator, and that's just the amount we need. I asked, I asked Jim how much we needed to bump that up.
So, hold on. What's the parking, Parking Clerk Service Bureau expense?
Okay.
Is that her software?
Yes.
So we're gonna find out how much that costs her, too, because I'm sure that's not, that's probably gone up in three years.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay. Now the generator expenses.
Jim says since we are taking over all the expenses, he says we need to bump that up two thousand dollars to six thousand. That's what he said. I don't believe him, but that's what he said.
Okay. Are you yelling down the hallway?
I don't know.
Oh, boy. What the hell's going on out there? Good?
Oh, good.
Okay.
A lot of slamming doors.
It's all like, no, they, there was someone outside they were talking to.
Oh, alright. So generator expense, up two thousand?
Six thousand?
Twelve, six thousand.
Are you sure? Because that's all the town generators.
I know.
Well, except for the police department, because that one's gonna be maintained by...
We still have the one at the old...
Yeah, but we still have the one at the old town hall.
I would do it up to eight, if it were me.
Yeah, but Jim, he obviously does his research. He's saying six.
But, yeah. But I would hate to have something majorly happen and...
How about sixty-five hundred?
Okay.
Sixty-five?
Because I hate to go beyond what he's saying.
Yep.
Yeah? And it is for all the generators.
Okay, and our lease, copier lease is fifteen?
Uh, whatever number. Do you remember what the number was?
Well, I wrote down here fifteen.
Okay.
Copier rental and paper is what I wrote down.
I could ask him for a, a, a number, or I can dig up a number.
No, I...
So fifteen thousand?
Yeah, fifteen thousand.
Okay.
That's what I put down.
Okay.
Actually, that's probably about right. Fifteen divided by twelve. Yeah, it's like a twelve hundred a month.
Okay? The boiler maintenance?
No, that one, he put up to sixty-five hundred.
Okay. And that's our service contract, is that?
That's our service contract, and then we had a couple issues on the boiler, the, the two boilers that we had here. We had to fix them, and...
Oh, we had the, yeah.
Yeah, so now they're good for twenty-five years, but, so he just said probably sixty-five hundred.
Okay.
So now we're on the Rutland Regional Dispatch.
And I just gave you that.
You just gave me that, but I'm not seeing where it says our part, what we owe. Unless I'm, I'm seeing a lot of dispatch and who they are and their calls. They're talking a lot about them, but they're not seeing what our share is.
I'll call the director, because he usually sends us over what...
I know they've been applying for grants each year, and I don't know, we haven't heard if they got another round of grants for that, but I have, I haven't seen anything through.
Yeah. So twenty-twenty-three, it actually has two numbers for us. It has FY twenty-twenty-three, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. And then FY twenty-twenty-three adjusted, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and fifty-three cents.
Well, we wanna pay the adjusted amount.
So...
Well, I think the adjusted amount is why they sent out that paperwork, because my other one didn't have an adjusted. Because they sent me one a couple of days ago and it didn't have an adjusted. So what was it, I'm sorry?
One twenty-nine, seven forty, and fifty-three cents.
So did you wanna...
It's like nine thousand less.
Right?
Yeah, although their FY, the twenty-two number doesn't match. But yeah, I guess so. So one twenty-nine, seven forty, fifty-three. So it went up like a hundred bucks. That's pretty good, I gotta say that's... If that's correct, right?
Do you guys know if that's the correct number?
That sounds like in the ballpark. My guess is that they had an adjustment come in for population or something like that. They made some sort of an adjustment there. I, I don't know, I haven't seen that amount myself, but I know they did it. I haven't, I, I can take a look at it, yeah, but, I mean, that sounds like in the ballpark of where we normally are, so.
Usually sends it to us, but I actually...
But usually, we, we, I mean, it could, those numbers could have just come out, but I, I haven't seen a copy.
I just got that today.
Okay, I, I haven't seen it, so.
And I got one last week, and then today's, when I got this, it said revised.
Yeah, they must have done some sort of adjustment on it. We can reach out to Mike tomorrow and see what the deal is with that. But, I mean, it's definitely in the ballpark.
Yeah, they must have done some sort of adjustment on it. We can reach out to Mike tomorrow and see what the deal is with that, but, I mean, it's definitely in the ballpark of where it's been in the past, so. And I know, again, they were applying for that same grant to. Abate that entire amount.
That would be really great.
Abate the entire amount.
That's what they've done the last two years, that's how we got half the radio project money. Is we, we, at town meeting, we went and asked the town to take the money that they got off a grant for the assessment and divert the money to the infrastructure project. That's why we only asked for half of it in ARPA fees, ARPA funds. So, um. Well, we had budgeted for that, but then we came back and said it was zero. That's correct. We had already, the, the town had already approved that through the ominous budget, and then we just asked to redirect it towards the infrastructure project.
So maybe we should use the big number.
Remember, we're trying to take, save the town.
Yes, I know.
And we gotta pay for all this other stuff.
We gotta pay for all the other stuff, so.
Yeah.
Right now, they're pushing that, but there's some, it depends on grants and stuff like that, as to. Wow, that'd be great if that contract. Yes, exactly. Alright, selectmen B, right?
Yep. So. Looking at administrative secretary. Selectmen's assistant.
Seems like it's going down every year, so we continue to go down if that.
Yeah, let's cut secretary pay in half.
Yeah, I would say so, that's fine.
We don't need an assistant. Karen's like digging her.
And she can get her own supplies and stuff, right?
Yeah, like she doesn't need any expense account. That's, that's crazy, five hundred dollars a year?
You can open any staplers.
Bring in our own stapler.
Borrow Millie's.
Millie's.
She's got two.
Chief, do you wanna take this?
Yes.
So. Alright.
So I guess my first question is, why did this go down twenty-one to twenty-two?
Because they dropped the.
Oh, the ten thousand dollars.
The ten thousand dollars off here, gave that to Nancy.
Oh, yeah, okay.
For the, um. R E L position, Records Accountability Officer.
Yep.
So that's why.
Yeah, whatever, we benefit from it, so. That's what I figured.
And currently, you're working under a contract? You're under the pay scale?
I'm under the pay scale. You didn't ever do a contract, and you didn't ever have me sworn in. Which, everybody keeps asking me, how come, how come, how come? I don't know. And they keep asking me how I, why I wasn't sworn in, and why I didn't, why I don't have a contract. And I go, I don't know, I just do what I'm told.
You were, weren't you?
It's a brand, yep. Nancy would have done that?
Yeah, Nancy would have done that.
You didn't ever tell, you didn't ever tell me to have her do that.
Is it because of the surplus? My god. That's something typically she just like, push, done.
That's because you have a secretary that does the memos, but when the secretary doesn't know, you guys don't tell her, then she doesn't do it.
When she's new. Secretary, get that done, please?
Yes.
Did the budget fall out the head?
So. FY twenty-three. Do we think Karen's worth any more money?
Twice as much.
I know you always go high.
No, I only went twice.
We're gonna have to move a lot of millionaires into this town to support Derek's budget.
Trying to help.
Oh wait, I got that. I got that in here.
Well, did you look at administrative secretaries?
I did.
And?
It's about fifty thousand.
Okay.
But, some of them have gotten way more years than I do.
Right, okay.
And they're higher, but somewhere about that, and they're, yeah, so.
So, first of all, we gotta look at. The pay scales that we have. In the town, and what pay scale are you exactly under?
Administrative assistant.
He's always so small.
I'm just gonna interrupt for one second. My phone, which is in the live, it's at two percent, so it's about to stop the go-live.
Okay.
Then if.
Plug it in?
I have a charger.
You have a charger?
Is it an iPhone?
Yeah.
Alright, the plugs are dead, you don't plug that? No excuses.
See, she deserves twice. It's more than twice.
Thank you.
So, under the pay scale.
I don't have a block.
Oh.
You don't have your charger.
I probably got my. My bag has everything in it. I got a stapler.
Give it to Karen, she'll need it.
No, I have a stapler. I might need staples. Oh, wait, there's a bunch in that.
There you go. In the hidden space in the building. It's kinda like our own little El Capone vault. Except ours had stuff in it.
We saved the go-live. We're at one percent.
So what pay scale are you under? Boiler health, selectmen? Secretary? The C two?
I believe so.
What step do you?
Five. That's what you started at, twenty-one, twenty-six?
Well, it's not that one.
Twenty-one. Sixteen. No, yeah.
No, sorry, here we go, thank you. Okay, here we go. Alright, so. And what's, what was the research? What you did?
We're between forty-eight and fifty-two.
An hour?
No, a year.
Well, then, what the hell is that, an hour?
Well, because it's on a year here.
Forty-eight.
Twenty-five.
Besides, I sit down all day, if you know what happens.
So it was C two, is that what she's at?
No.
I haven't.
She's on the third page, under COA Director and Selectmen Assistant. So under, with Millie. Sharon.
And what'd you get hired at?
Well, I went twenty-one sixteen, right? But you have to remember, the number that's in the budget is way more than what I'm making. Because the number in the budget was for Priscilla.
You've also learned a lot more since then, too. You kinda made yourself. You're a very important part of this office now.
Well, so do we have to? Do we have to do this pay scale?
Yeah, we have to do all the pay scales, though.
So before we can even decide on this, right?
And then Sharon.
Because that M's in twenty, I mean, it's over, so. We would need to do a twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Right, well, we're doing all that anyways.
Yeah, but I don't know.
But Sharon, Sharon is coming in, she was supposed to be in tonight, and we probably could have fixed this whole thing if she came in, because we could have gone over that. But she's. Under that scale.
I'll put it on hold.
Yeah.
Sharon Millie. The director of the senior center. They were supposed to come in tonight and do their budget, but she had something happen, she couldn't come in.
Wish we had a budget a little bit for pizza night.
That typically comes out of the selected salary.
Yeah.
I'm all for it.
That's, that's what that five, five grand a year. Does, we get to buy everybody pizza.
It's too bad they have a wing of pizza.
I don't want pizza, I want the fries you had earlier.
Those fries are really good.
Oh, man.
Good fries.
Over Village Market.
Oh my.
Oh, really?
Gosh, they are.
Oh my god, those fries are delicious.
Yeah?
Just perfect Christmas, nice seasoning. I, I tasted, I, I ate one, and I'm like, oh my god, and I'm like, Karen, you gotta try one of these. And she tried it.
It was good.
Even Becky came in. And I gave one to her, and she's like, oh my god, those are good.
So how are they called, just french fries?
Huh?
Yeah.
French fries?
Just french fries, they were five bucks.
And you got a good mouth.
Yeah, a good, good mouth. So perfectly seasoned.
Back to the.
So Village Market.
Go home.
Alright.
So.
Well, okay, so what about Selectmen's Assistant? We'll have to put. Her thing on hold.
Well, did you, did we use up the whole three grand for the Selectmen's Assistant?
No, because Martha usually comes in and gets her sixty hours. I only had her use it when I had COVID.
Right.
So we only use.
Didn't we use some of this before Karen got hired, though?
Yeah, because I could email a little bit.
Yeah.
I'd say just keep it at the three grand.
So that's basically what it's for, is for Martha?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You need somebody to come in, Filpia.
Okay.
So I'd say keep it at the three grand, then.
Yeah, because we're not even close to that right now.
Yeah. Just in case. And your expenses? Is that about right, five hundred?
Yep, that's good.
Okay. So five hundred. And we're gonna come back to. Well, why don't we just make a decision on that? Yeah, I.
Well, what's the, um.
Is that somebody saying something?
Somebody came in.
Oh.
There's Jim.
Where's my.
Jim McKeon, yeah.
He went home to come back in? Go.
Can I expand that up?
Well, what is the pay scale?
Well, it's only thirty, thirty-six hours.
Oh, thirty-six hours?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering what the increase.
It's two percent a year plus five percent a step.
Oh, is that though? Really, okay. Did you hear that? Two percent a year and five percent a step. Who said it?
That's according to Tammy. On the old, on the old step systems, it was two percent a year, then five percent a step.
Yeah. Yeah, two percent. Hmm, two and a half percent.
Okay.
But how much was Sharon asking for?
Fifty-four, fifty-three something. I can go get it.
So. Whoever did this pay, whoever made this chart did it wrong. Because I just found one that was one point seven percent as a step.
So, well, that's why we're doing it over, and we're doing it right this time.
Yeah.
Um. So if we bring. Take Karen up to fifty thousand. A year.
Alright, so you're saying, and it's thirty-six hours?
Mm-hmm. Thirty-six is really hard to meet when you have selectmen's meetings to go to, you don't make it.
Till nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night?
You don't make it. I'm always, I'm always over my thirty-six hours.
Oh, yeah, okay. So thirty-six hours a week times forty-eight, right, is seventeen. Twenty-eight. That ends up twenty-eight ninety-four.
An hour. I guess.
Well, if you take fifty thousand, divided by seventeen twenty-eight hours in a year.
No, but right now, she's only at. Twenty-one sixteen.
Yeah.
And how much hourly?
So, times, twenty-one sixteen times are hours.
So twenty-one sixteen.
Because the number that you see on there is not the number I'm getting, that's what Priscilla was getting.
You're making thirty-seven something? Right, twenty-one sixteen.
Yeah, something.
Times thirty-six.
Now you're doing your math wrong somewhere.
I don't make that much, I guarantee it.
Times forty-eight. It's thirty-six, five sixty-four.
Okay, that's right.
Okay.
So if we do. Well, how much, how many hours are the other ones that you were comparing with? How many were they working?
Um, anywhere from. Thirty to, not, nobody was over forty.
Yeah.
But if you're keeping me hourly and you're not doing a contract, then you better put a little bit more in, because I keep going over.
More hours.
Yeah, I keep going more hours. I, I'm usually right around forty, and. Then when we have super late nights, it's more. Now, if you get your super late nights, when you have a holiday, you don't pay me overtime. So like, on President's Day, if you go super late on that Selectmen's meeting, I don't get paid overtime.
Well, we're not having a meeting on President's Day.
I know, but you're having one that week.
Yeah. Alright. So we gotta look at what it's gonna be. So you, you're making twenty-one sixteen now, an hour.
How much, so if we bump her, bump it up to twenty-five dollars an hour? Well. Twenty-five, okay. It's forty-three, two hundred. Well, that's what this, that's about what this is. So if we just leave this the same. Why don't we, why don't we just, why don't we do that? We're already budgeted to forty-three. And we can bump up. It'd be twenty-five sixteen. Forty-three, four seventy-six, forty-eight. So if we just keep that number the same, we're all set.
What if you did 40 hours a week? Because that is what I usually average.
And take it from this number?
No, do it, do it.
Do the 2516 times 40 hours.
Times 1920. It's 48, 307 and 20 cents.
Because don't forget, I'm most of the town admin assistant. So I think 40 hours a week is probably what I'm going to be working.
So right, right now, you have to stay at 36? Is that what the deal is?
Well, I can go to 40, but they don't want me to because normally it's not in the thing. But because I'm making less than what you had budgeted, then I can go to 40 a week.
Oh, so it just depends on what we budgeted. So if we budget you with an hourly wage, wage times 36, then that's what you could do.
So we can bump it up. Let's bump her up to the 40 hours because again, we're gonna have the town administrator here. The town administrator's working five days a week. And even if she doesn't work five days a week and she works 40 hours a week.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm good with that.
She is gonna have to work more. You are gonna have to work more.
I know I'm gonna have to work more. I already figured that out.
So if we jump, bump up that step. To 2516.
Oh, I see what you did. Okay. But it's at 40 hours, too, so. Well, I don't know what that, that's, these pay scales are.
I know, they're ridiculous.
I mean, frankly, that's, it's a similar increase to. I think what we had talked about with highway, right, and fire.
Because that, that gives, because she's learned a lot and everything. She's definitely much more advanced than she was when she first got on. And that kind of is where she should be.
So we're gonna take step five.
Step five, and we're gonna use that, and we'll back.
Backfill.
Backfill everything else from step five. And we'll start that at 2516 an hour.
Okay, I can do that. So, and it's 2% a year, 2% a step?
No, it's 2% a year, 5% a step.
Okay, but that's, are you sure?
That's what, that's, I was having a conversation with Tammy.
Because that's not what she said.
No.
That's not what we've been seeing.
No, it's two and two.
I.
Yeah.
I agree with you guys. All I know is that's what she said.
And even you just saying that one is, one of them is 1.7.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It wasn't even a 2%.
All right.
So when we do it, we're gonna do across the board. So basically, the next fiscal year, if you get a step, you basically get a 4% raise.
Yeah.
So.
Step five.
So what's that per year for 40 hours?
No, it is 48, 307 and 20 cents.
So 48, 308?
Well, no, but then you don't, but that's not following the step, then. Then you gotta back into the step. I would just, I would just leave it the way it is.
How you do for a step increase?
I've been here three years.
So you do for a step increase?
Yeah, but then, my God, okay.
So add 2% on that now.
But then this should, yeah, okay.
So just take that number and add 2%.
All right, so 2516 plus 2%, 2611. At 40, times, times 1920. Is 513504.
There you go.
No, 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 5013504.
Okay.
50,000.
50,000.
13504.
3504.
Okay, so now that you did that, that's actually the step six.
Mm-hmm.
2611 is now a step six, which is what you're at now. What will, you will be. Right? Okay.
Okay, next.
Okay. Well, that one's done.
So the law department expense is, yeah, where are we on that?
We're at 28.58%. But that doesn't include all of these bills, and she didn't include all of the other Marco bills because she hadn't paid them yet.
What's Marco?
I mean, this one, your, the company.
Oh, Merrick.
Merrick.
Okay, so Merrick is another.
So all the ones that you've given her, she hasn't paid.
It's another 8,000. I'm still waiting.
So that's 58, 50, yeah, 58,000 is what we have left.
So 50, what we have left?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
An expanded, yeah. I know, that's what I keep saying.
With all the times we've been sued?
But see, what, how, do you know how much your last set was? Your last set of these bills?
No, I don't know what, which set. I just know all the Merrick bills.
Okay, how much have you paid all the Merrick bills right now?
Let me see.
4,710.30 is what she had put in, but that wasn't, that didn't include the last ones that you just did. So we.
Okay, so total.
We're probably about 50,000 that we have left out of 90.
About 19,000 is what I have that we've paid so far.
Okay, then, and she only had, so you have 19 and then eight here?
Uh, eight, yeah.
Okay, so that's 27, and she has four here, so you have 25, 25,000 coming off of this 64.
So 25.
So 64,000 minus 25,000 is.
39,000. So that's what we have left?
That's what you have left.
Okay, okay, so hold on, so 39, which means.
Because I was worried we were gonna go over this.
Yeah, it was too. So that means we've spent 51.
Yep.
Which is, uh, divided by 90. So it's almost 60%. Now, we got that. The Amicus brief, which is gonna be another like 7 or 8,000. And we're gonna have some, we have some unusual bills this year.
So I'd say just keep it the same, then.
Yeah, I think we could maybe safely keep it the same, right?
Yeah, just in case. Just in case. We don't wanna go short on our legal.
No, I, no, definitely not. I mean, once this solar stuff is done.
Yeah.
We'll be in a better position, but.
Now, the rent control board, that hasn't been done in years.
No.
So do we even have a rent control board?
What is that?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. So I'd say nothing.
Rent control is like, if you're a landlord, you can't raise your rents. You'd probably have to go before the board to raise your rent, and they would approve it or not. It's a way to keep housing prices down for renters.
Maybe lose bed?
I guess so.
So I, I don't see how we would need. It hasn't been funded, and nobody's mentioned it at all.
Yeah, just leave it.
So I'd just say.
Yep.
Nothing.
Okay.
Board of Appeals?
Uh, leave it.
Yeah.
Economic Development Committee, like, what is that?
I don't think we have one.
We didn't have one.
I don't think we do. Can we just? Should we just zero that out if we, yeah, what do you think?
Well, is it for the committee, or?
Which one? This Community Development Advisory Committee?
I don't know. But it just says committee. It doesn't say expenses or anything else.
Yeah.
And I don't see anything on these papers.
Yeah, I would say just zero it out.
Haven't even heard of one.
Yeah. I mean, that's what the Community Development Advisory Committee is basically now, like, trying to get the grants and stuff, right? Well, it's not really economic development, but that would be like bringing business in.
Has that money ever been used?
Well, it's never been encumbered, so that means that it's either been spent or they've just given it back. Economic and development. Yeah, it's just $100, and then nothing has been spent out of it.
So let's get rid of it.
Yeah, okay.
Historical Commission?
You got some statistics on that one?
Have they spent anything?
That's gone up like $1,000 every year, like, what is up with that?
So I wish they'd put the stupid numbers on here.
Why is Cultural Council such an odd number?
I'm looking, I'm looking. Cultural Council has not spent any of their money.
None?
None, not a time.
So let's just drop them down to 1,000, then. If they're not spending anything.
Right. Okay. What is Cultural Council? They would do things like, they might have a scholarship. They've done trips, like a museum trip, you know, go to the MFA in Boston or something. I'm trying to think what else.
Historical hasn't spent anything either, by the way.
Really? Why don't we drop that? To 1,000?
Yeah, yeah, they haven't spent anything.
I believe.
I don't wanna unfund them, but.
Yeah.
If they're not using their money.
And then drop.
Probably, probably get some.
Cultural Council? What did you say? Oh, to 1,000 or 5, yeah.
I'd say 1,000 because they haven't spent any of their money.
Yeah, okay.
You know, these people are spending money, so. The street lighting?
Well, we're gonna.
Streetlights.
We're gonna redo that contract, but.
Yeah.
So streetlights, we have spent on our, let's see, purchases, we've spent 33%. So we have 1,000. So it's 15,000, so we have $10,041 left in that. And then the streetlight maintenance, we have. Why did she add that at the end of that? It was 15,000. We have 8,000 left in that. We've spent 67.
So the first one, we've only spent a third, and the second one, we've spent about half.
Yep.
Yeah, but that contract's coming up, so we're gonna have to redo that. So I'd say let's just keep that one.
Keep them both?
Keep them both the same.
Okay.
Because, you know, again, we have all these LED lights, and I'd hate for all of a sudden they, they all stop going out at the same time, and we don't have money for them.
All right, Hydrant Precinct A, we have tonight, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to find it. You know, you gave it back to me. I have too many papers. All right. The new bill for Precinct A is 39,625.
So it went up like what?
1,500 and something?
Yeah, I guess so, huh?
39,625.
Yeah.
But I don't have. I don't have West Warren right here, but you brought that one.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that was part of this.
So these, these next three, after that, we have to get out from Dawn.
Well, what's the regional, you mean regional planning, though? What's that about?
It says Dawn. And why is it $1,508?
Sounds like CMRPC, but I'm not sure.
Unless it's software.
It could, no, it could, we, we pay an annual fee to them, based on population? And I think it's about that. I think that sounds about right, right? Yeah, yeah. I think that's what it is. Yeah. Because it's CMRPC has those two words in there. Yeah. Letters. Yeah, and you have to pay a fee every year to be a member. Yeah, the planning board pays the same.
Was it, we did the building inspector? She wanted her salary to go up.
I don't know where that is. Oh, no, we.
We did, we moved past her, and we sent her.
No, electrical. We did electrical, not building.
Yeah, we didn't have building inspector in our thing, though, because there's a separate, I guess, huh?
Okay, I do not have, it was West Warren Library, not Water District. I do not have that.
Okay, so we'll have to find out about that.
So I have a question mark on that one.
Can you look up regional planning in the, your green bar? Because we're thinking that's the yearly fee for CMRPC.
Does the building inspector fall under the, the building department?
Yes. Electrical doesn't. For some reason, I don't know why.
So that would fall on the planning board? Right? BJ's?
She just had it.
Yeah, but is her, is her expense line on the planning board?
I don't remember.
I've never seen it.
So at least I'm feeling that, that's my report. So what am I looking for?
Uh, regional planning. See, on the initial CM, RPC is regional planning. Central Massachusetts Regional.
Central Massachusetts Regional Planning something.
Yeah, but we're just looking at what? This has a footnote of Dawn. So I don't know if Dawn's, that's Dawn's expenses? That she puts out? Maybe that's something she has?
Well, we moved down those.
I think the other things are definitely Dawn's, right?
The other, the other two are definitely hers, liability and workers' comp. Maybe the regional planning, because I have that little.
Regional assessment.
Yeah. Yeah, which region, how much is that?
The regional assessment. One thousand five hundred and eight dollars.
That's what that is?
Yeah, that's it.
Did, was she looking for any more?
Um, you have treasure in that, oh, did you get it past me? Let me look.
Okay, so that just, we'll just keep that the same. The building inspector came in under Jill, under planning board.
Yeah.
She did the letter with the new page.
All right, I know I saw it in here, I just see. My annual report, this says. Public library. Jerry's. James. That's the blunder, cemetery. All right, I know I have Dawn. Parks and Brains, treasures, I knew I had it.
All right. So what, what's she looking for, her regional planning?
She doesn't have it in here. She has county retirement, Medicare, Medicare Dental, retiree medical, life insurance, employment and insurance.
How about liability insurance?
Well, she doesn't have that one either.
Workers' comp?
Nope.
So how about we ask Dawn what those should be? Because I'm sure they gone up.
We will add, or she got this.
All right.
All right, so that works out. Our ones, it's so far, we just gotta get a couple of answers that we can finalize.
Electrical inspector, parking clerk.
Yeah.
Um, and Dawn, those are the.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Okay. All right, moving on. So warrants and bills.
Make a motion to pay the following warrants, number sixty-six payroll for forty thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. Number sixty-seven vendors, hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. Following bills, Northeast IT, three bills. Two for twenty-two hundred three dollars, and then one for six hundred forty-nine. In Trivo ARPA, which must be the test kits.
Yep.
Forty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
ARPA?
ARPA stands for the American Recovery Rescue Plan Act.
No, Recovery Plan Act.
American Recovery Plan Act?
No.
No, I looked it up.
It's recovery, because I always thought it should be rescue too.
Are you sure? All right. Derek believes for the, um, that new fancy speaker, nine ninety-nine, that's nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Paul Shepperson, um, electrician for shut-off valves, uh, fourteen hundred fifty dollars. C two MA Adams.
So, one second. ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act.
Oh, see?
Ooh.
So ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one.
All right, C two MA Adams for six hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents. Miracle Connell for, um, one thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty cents, fifty-six cents, three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Servu locksmith, uh, for four fifty-eight. Uh, Jim Dusty for painting, thirty-three fifteen. Crystal Rock for five dollars and twenty-nine cents, WB Mason for two twelve ninety-eight. My motion, I need a second.
Second? All in favor?
Rich, aye.
Betty Bellis, aye.
David Duprein, aye. The motion passes unanimously. The bills and warrants will be paid. So minutes?
I didn't look at, did we get minutes?
Yeah, you've got, these are the ones that you said last week, but you didn't tell me, so I didn't put them on.
Oh, okay. Wait, what?
You said that you had read them and they were okay, but you.
Oh, that's right, okay, okay, so I make a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second? All in favor?
Rich, aye. Betty Bellis, aye.
David Duprein, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And the minutes for January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two are approved. Okay? So old business. We went over opening of the building. Um, we made those decisions, okay? Monitor for the selectmen's room.
Coming soon. With the team, with the camera.
I wasn't told, didn't you?
So don't worry, chief, I'm, I was trying to get it local, but try to get the tax access, so I can bring it myself here, I just. I have this feeling of shipping a big TV is not gonna.
No, it works fine. Walmart, you know, Walmart's not local, by the way.
Yeah. But, but if we have to earn it, it's easy.
Just to go there. Now, if you send them, we can order it right on Amazon, get the, um, business count, discount. And get it tax-free. And just make sure we do a, um.
So we're gonna order the, the TV, the bracket to hold it on the wall, and, um, a couple cables. One cable is a twenty-foot extension from the TV to the speaker, camera, mic.
Email it and I'll, Dawn can order it by Monday.
I'll put everything in a package. And the other one will be, so Rich can probably hurt his computer, which is an HDMI that goes to the TV. But we were talking with Karen, that also gonna be a computer over there. We can have your computer back over there, and we can get a wireless mouse, so you can control it, look at the TV from here, from the desk.
Yeah, I actually have a mouse with me.
Yeah, so by using a wireless mouse, you can put the computer there, we can save on the.
Yeah, but if you have to type on it or something, so if we just get a twenty-foot HDMI cable, that'll bring us right here. And then if we need to roll it up, we can roll it up and put it over there.
Okay.
So, as long as we're longer and not shorter.
Yes. So that's those three things we're gonna order.
So, all right, so we get in the monitor. So, anybody else have old business? Yeah, old business, didn't you?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
Uh, the monitor was the old business, right? Okay, so nobody has old business?
No.
Derek, old business?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, new business, monthly for, for police and fire departments. Let's see how they did.
That's what they've been saying before.
All right.
Gonna suffer through this whole meeting.
I know, feel so bad. So.
We're sorry you had to suffer through the meeting.
The January, January first to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. You mean twenty twenty-two, chief?
Oh, yeah. I did it right in the first line.
Honestly, the last two years have just like. I just think it feels the same, it just repeats.
Uh, logs called, one thousand eight hundred and forty-one calls, five felonies, uh, eighty incident reports. Uh, on view arrests, three, warrant arrest, five, summons arrest, twelve, total arrest, twenty. Protective custody's three, juvenile, four. Uh, motor vehicle stops, ninety-eight. I don't know, I think that note, number's a little low, because I was listening to the radio one day, and you probably did ninety-eight calls in that one radio call that I heard.
Well, the motor stops, wow, the, with the bad weather, that goes down.
So motor vehicle citations, thirty-six, okay?
So that's sixty calls a day? Right? If you take the eighteen forty-one divided by thirty-one?
That, that includes.
That number, yeah, that number includes a lot of different statistics in the IMC system with regard to like, it's a fire and police incident, one goes, the other goes, they're both entered, it, there's a. There's a little difference in those numbers, it's just the way they're entered into the IMC system, that can include stops, that can include our paperwork, it can include fire stop too.
Somebody coming in to talk to an officer.
Yeah. Oh, I see, okay.
Motor vehicle stops are in that.
Yeah. Okay.
That's total calls logged for the month.
Yep. Yeah, okay, right.
But still, that's, that's, that's still a lot though, for a small town.
Sixty every day, basically, it seems like.
With like one or two officers on at a time.
Yeah.
That's a lot of calls.
Police and fire kind of merge together in the, in the overall Rutland IMC system, so you, you know, there's, it's kind of a double sometimes, depending on what the call is, kind of, you know what I'm saying? It's hard to explain without explaining the IMC system, but.
Okay. And, yeah, vehicles are still there. How's the new vehicle doing?
Very well.
Very good?
That's the hybrid's doing real good.
How many miles you got on it now?
Fourteen thousand.
Right.
They added quick. The other newer one is at seventy, almost seventy-two.
Yeah.
So it's almost time to replace that.
Yeah, that's pretty bad, because when, again, I just did EVOC, and all those state police, state police vehicles, that, we were beaten the hell out of. We're all under like seventy thousand. They were like sixty, sixty-five thousand. And those were their junk vehicles that they would get rid of.
Well, they're getting rid of them.
And they have less mileage. And you gotta remember, they're up on the highways too. So. So, you had a tough month with COVID?
Yeah, we had a couple guys come down with it.
Okay.
Are we still tracking that for reimbursement through? I have been keeping it on the side.
Yes.
I don't know if I'm reporting.
I have paperwork, but you have to say, you have to, I'll print it out for you.
All right.
Or I'll email it to you, and every week you have to fill out this paperwork. Okay?
Okay.
So, uh, you got the drug investigation in there, that?
Yeah, we talked about that at one meeting.
So Detective Neil, she did an outstanding job with that. She, uh, they did a drug bust on a house, seized heroin, and three loaded firearms that were unsecured. So. Great job.
Sounds very dangerous, and you have to commend her for.
Yes.
It was a good job.
This is like, wow.
We had, uh, we had help from the other towns that helped us, Ware, Westbrook Field, Hardwick. Uh, who else, not Cruze, a couple states came. We had quite a few people there.
Is, is this someone she had been tracking for a while, kind of, or, you know, like?
Yeah, it's, drug work's not easy.
Yeah, you can't really get into the details.
Yeah.
Never mind.
It resulted in an arrest, and we're good. Drugs off the street.
Yeah.
Guns that shouldn't be in somebody's hands got taken off the street. So, good job. So you did the school safety, both you and Adam? Cool?
So I do have one update.
What's up?
I put on the bottom there that, uh, we, we applied for the AEDs.
Yep.
And yesterday, we were granted it, and I'm gonna look at my phone, because I don't wanna screw up the, the people.
So, hold on.
So. You, just me and you, so I can pull this down, right? So, we applied through this company, oh, it's not a company, it's a nonprofit, they're called Six Ten. And what it is, is, uh, this gentleman, David Greenwood, his wife Denise, his two daughters, Erica and Jessica, run this, uh, nonprofit. And it's for David, wh- why they call it Six Ten is David passed away on June tenth of twenty seventeen. After he went for a bike ride at home, he dropped a cardiac, uh, arrest, in, right in front of his daughter. So, the first responding, uh, is always usually a cruiser that, a police officer comes down, so a cruiser came, and they didn't have an AED. So, they weren't able to give him a shock, and the family believes that if that cruiser was outfitted with an AED, they possibly could have saved their father. So, what their mission is, is Six Ten AED is a nonprofit organization that Denise, Jessica, and Erica found in response to David's death. Their goal is to raise enough money to fly every police vehicle in the United States with an AED. So no other family will have to ever wonder what if that they had on. So, uh, I had to talk to you, I believe, early, uh, our AEDs, and Adam will tell you, that they were, been in the Cruze's before I came here, I've been there over fifteen years. They're outdated, um, so we were.
Whether they're reliable, the batteries will.
So we had, uh, we got in touch with, with this group last month and, uh, applied, and they're supplying us with two brand-new ones. Uh, they dropped off one yesterday, and they ordered another one for us, so that should be coming in.
What brand are they?
Uh, Zole.
Oh, okay.
So, uh.
Very good.
We got one already, and we're just waiting for them to grant us the second one.
Very good. And, thank you very much to the family again? What was her name?
Uh, what's, what's her name, Greenwoods, uh, I don't know where they're from. But it's, it's in recognition, like I said, of the father. David, so the, the three that are doing it is the, the mother Denise, and the daughters Erica and Jessica, we have a picture of, uh.
Thank you to Denise and Erica and Jessica for doing that for the town.
So.
We appreciate it.
The lieutenant I have planted on, trying to, we're gonna make something up and send it to them to thank you. I do have a picture of the lieutenant and Erica with the AED, and as soon as I can figure out to get it to Kyle, they'll put it up on, uh, Facebook.
Very good.
If, if I could piggyback off of that for just one second. And, I'm sorry, don't get off Lester. Uh, in, in all seriousness though, you know, I, I wanted to mention the police department too, one thing that's not on, on my report that, that happened, and these are things that not, don't happen very often.
Yep.
Um, regarding AEDs and stuff, uh, we had an incident in town approximately a week and a half ago now, or just over that. Where two off-duty call firefighters, uh, from, from my department, uh, were working their jobs doing snow cleanup. And they actually witnessed a cardiac arrest of a gentleman that was shoveling, and it happened like that. And the two of them rendered immediate CPR to this individual. Uh, the ambulance was there within two minutes, the first arriving police officer assisted them right away, and that man is alive today. And they are gonna be recognized with a CPR save for that incident with zero deficits, he was talking in the back of the ambulance by the time they got to the hospital, after being clinically deceased. So, something like that happens maybe one to three percent of the time, when someone goes into cardiac arrest, and they drop directly into two, in, in front of trained actual first responders. So that's something that, and before I even started finding out about it, because I wasn't in town at the time, uh, or, excuse me, I was on the tractor clearing snow at the time, so I didn't hear the initial call. But, within an hour and a half, I was getting feedback from our medical control doctor, who's the head emergency room physician, and our EMS coordinator through Bay State. Again, these things don't happen very often, and when they heard about it, they immediately reached out, and it was very. Again, these things don't happen very often, and when they heard about it, they immediately reached out, and it was very abundantly clear that they said that there is no doubt in their mind that this individual would be dead if it wasn't for those exact circumstances. And police and fire immediately rendering care until the ambulance could get there and shock them within two minutes. So it's a pretty amazing call. Um, I am working with the, with the Bay State to get the paperwork on that, so they can actually be recognized for their heroic efforts, and, and, uh, this gentleman looks like he's going to make a full recovery. So it was a good opportunity to kind of piggyback off of that, when he was talking about the importance of AEDs and, and trained rescuers and everything. So, you know, there's only a split-second window for, for people, you know, one or two-minute window for people that are unfortunate enough to have that happen to them. You know, that someone is there to actually perform CPR and defibrillation immediately. So it was an amazing story.
Chief, can you just send us that in an email?
Yes, I, I.
And who the firefighter's names were?
Absolutely, I will, I, I have, have not released it yet, only because there are parameters that need to go with these types of calls, where they, paperwork need, you know, we need to make sure the person is indeed truly going to make it through the incident to, before we recognize someone, as you can imagine. So, you know, there is a little bit of a timeframe and some steps to go along with it, but, uh, I, we do intend on recognizing these individuals, both on our Facebook page, as well as probably at a selectmen's meeting or something, I'll ask to, to bring them in, or, you know, uh, you know, they're both very soft-spoken individuals, and Officer, Officer Bouchard that was involved is a, is a great guy, and, and they're not one to take credit, but in this particular instance, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that, that they absolutely saved that person's life. I will follow up with the board on that.
Follow up with us, please? Thank you. Thank you. And that's actually a great outcome, and.
Yeah.
It's great to hear that. And I know the importance of AEDs. I personally used AED, um, to save somebody, and I know how long it seems when you're giving somebody CPR. And it's real-world situation, and you know this person could die if you stop.
Yeah, and sadly, it, it almost always ends with an unfortunate end, you know, it, very rarely do these things happen. So again, that's why it's just so important to, to point out when they do happen, that everyone who played a role in that situation.
And seconds matter.
Oh, yeah, hundred percent.
Seconds matter, and, you know, it's, with technology, we're able to save more people now. And it's great to have those AEDs in the vehicles, and keep up the good work, you know, keep on getting those, you know, every car should have one. All right, so that was the police department. Um, did you want to touch up on anything for the police department?
No, I think that was everything, if I remember correctly.
You guys, you got your officer going through?
Uh, Bridge Academy, Obstacle, he's going through that. He's finishing up his.
He's going, completed defensive tactics?
Yep.
So he's getting his butt kicked?
Yep. Sore every day.
Yeah? Yeah, hey, as you get older, makes you realize how old you, you are, getting stretched, handcuffed. So for all those people that have been handcuffed out there, do not think a police suspect has never had handcuffs on them, because that is part of their training. And they spent a lot of time in cuffs themselves through training. So. All right. So fire department. Activated alarm, you had one, motor vehicle accidents, eleven, medical assist, seven, structure fires, one, chimney fires, one. Oil burning issues, oil burning issues, three, service call, one, carbon monoxide issue, one. Investigations, three, mutual aid, three. Uh, ambulance responded to seventy-one calls in January, twelve ALS intercepts, that's advanced life support intercepts required. Did, um, two smoke carbon monoxide inspections, and eight propane tape inspections. Uh, they held training. You had, you had training.
No, we, we held off on training one extra month because of COVID exposures. We're, we're going to be going back, we actually did virtual EMS training, uh, this month, uh, this last Wednesday. Uh, and we are starting fire training starting next week again. So now that things are starting to ease through a little bit, I'm going to bring people back together. I've been just trying to keep them separated for a couple months, so that we can kind of let the exposures die down a little bit. So we're in a much better place now, so, uh, we're going to start ramping that stuff back up again.
Very good. Did you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, we just, we've been busy as, as normal, you know, our ambulance calls keep going, uh, all the time. So, uh, you know, we're working on grants as usual, and processing grants that we currently have. We did, uh, we did order our, we're in the process of getting approval and ordering the ice rescue, uh, all of our ice rescue equipment is being replaced, uh, through a grant. Uh, so I'm just waiting for the final signatures. Uh, we did have a dog through the ice over at Westbrook Field, uh, that gained some attention and a story, it was a great outcome for the animal and everything, and the, and the, and the animal's owner was very appreciative. Uh, our, our firefighters actually made the save themselves. Uh, we actually got there quicker, um, where it was and everything, so, uh, you know, we used our old stuff, which is very, you know, it's old, it, it leaks a little bit and stuff. So it'd be very nice to get some new suits and everything, and we got approximately eleven thousand dollars to replace all of our ice rescue suits, all of our, uh, submersible rope, uh, or floating rope, I should say. Uh, reels and safety devices, so our entire cold water immersion kits and everything will be replaced in the near, very near future through a grant. So that, that's great news.
Very good.
So, yeah.
I did see that, the dog rescue on Facebook there, the outcome of that, good job.
People always love it when you get, when you can save an animal.
Yeah.
Or person, but animals are even more near, near to their hearts, you know?
Everybody loves when the dog.
Everybody loves dogs and cats, yeah.
All right, good job. So you guys have been doing an outstanding job, thank you very much. I know you're underappreciated sometimes, but I know this boy definitely appreciates you.
Thank you.
And I know from a lot of the outcomes on Facebook and social media, people love you guys, overall, so good job.
We got four minutes.
Yep. So we went through those comments and concerns, letter from Modern about ninety-two dollars?
Yeah, we already talked about that.
Yeah, they're just increasing their prices.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. And the next meeting is going to be February seventeenth, uh, follow up with some more budget items.
Real quick, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you're upset about Cornerstone closing, um, write them a letter, write the bank of, the commissioner of banks a letter, even though the period's over, write it anyway. And contact selectmen's office to get the addresses for those. Mr. Chairman, I just have one thing on thirty seconds, real quick, just for the board.
Go ahead.
Junior firefighter program, we are going to, uh, start to, uh, hopefully get that in action March first. I just wanted to, uh, quickly ask, I see no need to, for these individuals that are under eighteen to put them through a normal physical that we go through in terms of the fire department. They're not putting on air packs, they're not doing any of that stuff, we normally do pulmonary function tests. A basic physical from their primary care doctor, I think, is completely fine in this, to enter that program. And as long as the board's in agreement with that, you know, I would, I would like to just move with that, similar to the exam they give to, you know, if they're a student athlete, to Quabog. So it just allows them to, we know that they're healthy enough to do the job, you know, they're cleared by their primary care doctor, just to help us with equipment and stuff. If that's okay with the board, that's what I feel comfortable with.
Yeah, good with that. Yeah, they're not wearing SCBA's or anything like that.
I'm not going to pay five hundred dollars to do a pulmonary function test and all that, because they're not using that equipment. So, I know, I just wanted to get clearance that that would be okay with the board. Go ahead.
I'm good with that.
Thank you.
An SCBA is a self-contained breathing apparatus.
Our air packs.
The air packs that the firefighters wear. Okay? All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Nope, not yet.
Nope.
Got to decide on a day we're doing interviews for the town administrator. When you guys want to do the interviews? So this way I can call people.
Thursday with pizza and fries?
Thursday with pizza and fries.
Yeah, I mean, the seventeenth or the tw, you want to do Thursday or Friday?
I usually like Thursdays, you know?
So we can do Thursday, and we can start off at, say, nine in the morning?
Uh, which, the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth?
The seventeenth.
Okay, sure.
You want to do that, or do you want to go to the twenty-fourth?
It's sooner the better.
No, I don't see why we need to go to the twenty-fourth, we've got the resumes, we're ready to go.
Okay. And I'll just try to get a feel for when these people can be here. Because some of them actually have active jobs, so.
Yeah.
You'll also find some of the tape notes.
Yes. We could probably have Lori come in and do notes.
Okay.
So we'll do the seventeenth. And I'll try to do nine, ten, or nine, nine-thirty. And, uh, eleven?
Nine, ten, eleven.
We'll do an hour and a half each, because I remember the last one kind of, we were kind of rushing, because people get long-winded in the meetings. With, and we had a lot of questions, so if we do a lot, an hour and a half each, that gives us plenty.
So that would be nine, ten-thirty, and noon.
Nine, ten-thirty, and noon.
Yeah, okay.
So. Okay, so I'll do that on that. All right. So the interviews for the town administrator position will be on Thursday, February seventeenth. Okay? And we do need to post for that, that we're going to be doing that.
Okay. So we'll be putting names in, right?
Nope, just interviewing the applicants.
Or you can have names, okay, all right.
So. And then, now we're on to the next meeting, February seventeenth, at six PM is the next selectmen's meeting, and now the final part.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Rich, aye.
Betty Belize, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes, we are adjourned.